This is the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Michael Riley, Chairman of the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. Today is March 17th, 2020. It is 7:00 PM. Welcome to the regular meeting. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under your God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to call the roll, starting on my right.
Dominic Ferminino, alternate.
Brian Condon, Commissioner's Secretary.
Rami E, Vice Chairman.
Nicole Lupo, Commissioner.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Joe Chapin, Planning Administrator.
Sarah Stroud, Recording Secretary.
You.
So we will be seating one alternate tonight. Ryan?
Nicole. Well, Dominic Panicchio would be up, but he's absent, so it goes to Nicole.
All right, so Nicole, you will be seated.
You're on. It's a good one, too.
General public participation period. If any members of the public here tonight that would like to address the commission about any issue not on the agenda or likely to be on or near a future agenda, this is a time to identify yourselves.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
It's nice to see you all. Happy St. Patrick's Day. My name is Joel Green. I practice law in Bridgeport, offices of Green and Gross. It's my pleasure to appear before you this evening again on behalf of Peter Metropolis Trustee, the owner of various properties on Timothy Hill Road. And I know you're all familiar with the properties and familiar with me and my client. I know that on your agenda tonight is a matter dealing with some details of the project involving 64 Cambridge and 4 Independence. But we obviously, it's not in the way of a public hearing, and this is work by the commission, but there is a matter that we would like to address regarding this property. And that relates to the fact that my client has become aware that there is work being performed on the property consisting of pumping of the excavated quarry or the massive crater on the property. And it has come to the attention of my client that pumping, that the owner of the port, someone has actively been pumping water from the excavation. I note that this property is subject to a cease and desist. And while on January 20th, this commission adopted conditions of approval for an excavation and filling plan, the conditions that this commission had imposed and that indeed this commission is working on are, as of this date, unsatisfied, including most notably having a site oversight, which I know you're working on, and we appreciate your efforts, the posting of a bond and the like. And critically, the work has apparently begun and without the conditions having been satisfied, I would suggest that the cease and desist is still in place. And I would urge the commission to empower the zoning enforcement officer or such others as this commission deems reasonable and appropriate to investigate the nature of the work that has begun there and to take appropriate action to enjoin that work unless and until the conditions of the approval have been satisfied. And this is a serious matter, and we trust that the commission will take it seriously and as diligently as you have this application. We certainly appreciate your time and effort and your patience, and I appreciate your hearing me this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Are there any other members of the public here tonight that would like to address the Any other members of the public here tonight? If not, then we'll go on to our first public hearing, ZCA 2022-01, file number 1021D, MDD Overlay Zoning Map Amendment, Main Street. Well, it's not just Main Street, but we're calling it the Main Street Design District Overlay. Rick, you can present that, correct?
Yeah, Ryan has the legal.
All right. I just want to say a couple of words. Since the adoption of the 2021 POCD, the commission has been actively working on the formulation of a new zoning tool to address the ever-changing market conditions and to provide flexible zoning language while allowing for positive economic impact to the grand list and minimal burden on the town services and infrastructure. This has ultimately resulted in the adoption of the Main Street Design District for the Route 2511 and 34 corridors. We worked very closely with staff and solely engineering to create a new district which encourages a diversity of compatible uses, including business, commercial, and restricted multifamily housing within these corridor areas. Due to the unique characteristics of this corridor area and our desire to create an attractive environment, these regulations are intended to be flexible and to maximize the benefits to the town while enhancing the environment by encouraging public walkways, shared off-street parking, and reuse of existing unoccupied commercial space in town. It should be noted that we listened to the public at our public hearing and referred to a variety of other input officials in nearby towns that are using the same technique. We reviewed the fiscal impact analysis and impacts to the school district and to utilities. Final draft was adopted by the commission, and tonight we're going to be hearing about the map that has to be amended to make this official. Oh, Ryan, you have--
The notice. Yep. Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held March 17th, 2022 in accordance with CTS 8-7D. A public hearing will be held on Thursday, March 17th, 2022, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter. Be hybrid Zoom meeting at access Zoom and via phone, limited in-person attendees located at Monroe Town Hall, Council Chambers, 7 Van Helle Road, Monroe, Connecticut, concerning the following, ZCA 2022-01, file number 1021D, MDD Overlay Zoning Map Amendment, Main Street, Route 25, portion of Monroe Turnpike, Route 111, and portion of Roosevelt Drive, Route 34, as shown on map titled Proposed MDD Overlay, dated 2/24/22, in accordance with the establishment of the MDD Regulations of Section 5.4, Proposal of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice was published twice in voices Wednesday, March 2nd and March 9th.
Thank you.
And, Vic, you have the exhibits.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Exhibit 1, referral to the MetroCog with their comments. Exhibit number 2, a letter from Ray in George Gannon, a letter of support of the map change. Exhibit number 3, a copy of the 2021 POCD. And 4, a copy of the adopted text amendment being the Main Street Design District Regulation. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Would you like to present the map?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. All of the commissioners have a large-scale copy of the map, so you can add notes to it as starting with tonight, you're going to have an application for a specific parcel on Main Street. So this map is large enough so you can add those, the running tab, on the issues that you'll be discussing tonight, including its location, surrounding parcels, traffic consideration, and the areas existing zoning. Now, as the chairman has indicated, this commission spent a lot of time working with solely engineering in the creation of this new zone. There was a lot of input during the course of the public hearing, and this now is the final step after the text amendments have been adopted, the zoning map. Copy of the map here for the audience to see. And having said that, staff is pretty excited to move forward with this new regulation. This regulation gives this commission complete control. The first step is a combined text amendment and zoning map amendment, once this is adopted. So as the chairman indicated, we have another public hearing tonight, and that will be the first one under this new regulation. You are going to hear all of the various components that are required and then make a determination if it fits as envisioned under this MDD. So having said that, Mr. Chairman and the full commission, staff looks forward to working with the subsequent applications that come in for these amendments to the zoning regulations and the map. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public here tonight that have any questions or input regarding the adoption of the zoning map? Any members of the public online that have any questions, input, or against? Or none? Any of the commissioners have any questions? None? Okay, so--
On Route 34, Roosevelt Drive, how far does that go? It goes to the left only?
It incorporates all of the commercially zoned area, all properties within 1,500 feet of properties that have direct access to Route 34 and 111, too, because that recently undertook a new zone change there. That's a SP2.
Yeah.
But includes the gas station, the Monroe Pizza property, and all of the other parcels on 34.
Did you cut off one of the B2s, right?
Right.
Why'd you cut that off?
No, no, no. It includes all of the B2s.
No.
There's a red. See where the red goes down?
There's a little arrow pointing to the red.
There's an arrow there.
That's RF3.
RF3.
Yeah. Leon, you're right. It gets very messy because of the map, you know? But it includes all of the commercially zoned land on 34.
All right. If there are no other questions, then we will close this public hearing. Moving on, next public hearing. CTS 8-7D. Condon?
I do. Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice of public hearing to be held on March 17th, 22, in accordance with CTS 8-7D. A hearing will be held on Thursday, March 17th, 2022, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting, by phone, and in person at Monroe Town Hall, Council Chambers. File ZCA/RAA 2022-01, file number 1021E, Regulation and Zoning Map Amendment, SDD within an MDD Overlay Zone, Text Amendment and Zoning Map Amendment for Establishment of Special Development District Number 1, SDD Number 1, for a 188-unit multifamily development consisting of eight apartment buildings, accessory clubhouse, and outdoor recreation areas. Owner applicant Sabrina Keeler, CO Pondview LLC. Notice was published twice in voices Wednesday, March 2nd and March 9th.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon.
Vic, you have the exhibit list.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Exhibit number 1, comments from Aquarium Water Company over the Joe Welch. Exhibit number 2, revised plans submitted by solely engineering dated March 9th, 2022. And 3, referral comments from MetroCog and Norgutuck Valley Council of Governments. That is all.
Thank you, Rick. And for the applicant tonight--
Good evening, members of the commission. I'm licensed-- Office is located right here in Monroe at 5 Main Street. With me on this evening is a number of members of our team. I have autograph for representing company on the property. He'll be on the line and offering a presentation to discuss some of their company's product that they've put out that I think we'll be pulling together and something that we're really proud of and Howard is really proud of. Also have Stan Janowski from Realty Concepts, who performed economic impact assessment as part of this proposal. Mary Blackburn from my office, she's an landscape architect and worked on this project. What I'm going to do is I'm going to kind of run you through a brief introduction. Hand it over to Howard, who's going to run through some of their programming. We're going to pass that back to me and Mary to go through some of the specifics. I'm going to go to Stan to talk about his economic impact study, and then back to me to talk about traffic, and then back to Howard to close things out. So as this commission probably remembers--
Thanks, Mike.
So this process is one that started quite some time ago with the adoption of the Main Street Design District. Excuse me. I know this commission just heard a presentation. Don't change that. So just to run through the process in which we're working on, the Main Street Design District was a regulation amendment that was approved by this commission, which created the mechanism for a commission to receive and review a special development district zone change to land that MDD, I think it was just heard. Obviously, the application is a regulation amendment to create SDD1, Special Development District Number 1. And then, as the commission is handling now, if this is approved, the next steps would be then the well-incommissioned application for the property for regulated activity, followed by the zone change, which follows a special exception from the process, which is architecture reboarder. Those future activities, those future plans will essentially follow the same master plans that we proposed as part of this application. So the site, the subject site that we're working on is 127 Main Street. This is previously identified as the Pondview Development Site. I want to talk a little bit about the history of this site and this property, and then we're going to talk about what we're proposing. So the site itself is just under 20 acres, used for shopping center use. Site construction commenced, it's currently under construction, earthwork is taking place on the property. And this application is essentially to modify those previous approvals to pursue the construction of eight apartment buildings for a total of 188 units. Our master plan proposed as part of this depicts our proposed site plan layout, which includes, obviously, the eight apartment buildings, a highly amenitized clubhouse, highly enriched outdoor amenities throughout extensive landscaping and everything. And we believe that this would be truly a gem for the Town of Monroe to consider. Before we go too much into depth for our proposal, I did want to introduce and have Howard Rappaport, who I believe should be on. Howard, you on?
Yeah. I'm on.
So Howard, I want to talk a little bit about his company, what he's done, and some of the amenities, and then I'll go into a little more detail on the site layout.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening. I trust you can hear me okay. My name is Howard Rappaport, and I'm a principal with Continental Properties. We would be the developer, builder, owner, and manager of the proposed community of the 188 multifamily residences. Just a brief couple of words about Continental. We have a 65-year history since 1957 of building and holding multifamily housing communities similar to the proposed community that we're presenting tonight. We're among the largest developers in Connecticut with over 1,240 units, including rental communities in Trumbull, Shelton, and Milford. Although I'm not from Monroe, I'm local to Connecticut, having grown up in Woodbridge, and I believe that I have a very strong understanding of what makes Monroe a special Fairfield County town. If I could take just a few minutes to give you a sense of my vision for the proposed development. In every municipality in which we build, our communities literally, I think, are the gem of the town. They're first-rate, modern, luxury rental communities, and we have meticulously designed this community with Kevin and our team to be a development of which Monroe and its stakeholders can be proud. And I'm personally committed to building and executing such a community. So I guess the question is, what do I mean by a Class A, first-rate, modern, luxury rental community? There's a lot of words, a lot of buzzwords there. People who live in this area, in towns such as Monroe and Fairfield and Trumbull, have, from what we've seen, certain expectations of what they want in modern rental housing. And we welcome those expectations. They include the following: a high level of architecture contextual with its surroundings, a level of fit and finishes that is truly luxurious, level of landscaping and exterior amenities that is resort quality, and a highly amenitized level of interior amenities in the clubhouse to provide our residents with a sense of place and community. And Mary is going to just flip through for a minute some of the actual photographs of our communities to give you a sense of the quality and the sense of the lifestyle community which I'm describing. And I'll let you do that for a second, Mary. These new, modern rental communities are often referred to as lifestyle developments that offer everything in one place. Unlike older multifamily housing, these projects incorporate workspace, fitness centers, and public space for socializing. We have found that our residents prefer to lease and live in an amenity-filled community that meets all of their needs and conveniences at home, including remote working, fitness, and gathering spaces. Some of the photographs that Mary is flipping through have shown the high level of interior amenities in our clubhouse. Here in Monroe, we are proposing to build a clubhouse of approximately 7,000 square feet. The public spaces in the clubhouse would include a club room, cinema room, golf simulator room, a sports lounge for gaming and billiards, a private co-working space for our residents to work remotely, and an expansive fitness center with 18-foot ceilings and a window wall. All of the communities which we build include public art in the form of a commissioned stainless steel sculpture by an award-winning artist from New Fairfield. And I think, Mary, if you want to go back a couple of slides, there are two slides of some of the representative sculptures. There's one. There's one. That is in Rocky Hill. And if you flip a couple of-- But that one, that one is in Shelton. So we're committed to putting public art in all of our communities, and we've done so in Connecticut. The center core of this site will include a resort-quality pool with a fire pit and outdoor lounge area. Extra amenities will include various lawn games. Our vision is to develop a community with amenities consistent, literally, with a high-quality resort. Residents are attracted to and move to our communities as much for the lifestyle as for the floor plans and the square footage we offer. Now I'm going to turn and just briefly provide a overview of the community, and after that I'll hand it back to Kevin and Stan. The proposed community will have eight residential buildings, each of which are three stories. The community will have a secure gated entry. It will have a mix of one bedrooms and two bedrooms. All residences will have high-quality interior finishes, including gourmet kitchens with large islands, quartz countertops, stainless steel appliances throughout, upgraded lighting packages, and nine-foot ceilings for all dwelling units. So what we're really trying to do is create a sense of place with the combination of the outdoor amenities, the clubhouse, and the high-quality residences. I'd also like to point out that we're not only committed to building and developing such a community, but that we're also committed to operating it as such. At Continental, we have a long-term demonstrated track record of building and holding generationally our developed communities and operating them in a responsible manner. We've built 23 rental communities over 65 years and continue to own 21 of them, and the ones that we sold were out of the region. Long-term ownership provides Monroe with more stable management from Continental, one constant contact, which is me, and long-term curb appeal for the community. In summary, I'd just like to reiterate that I'm personally dedicated to working closely with your commission to thoughtfully design and redevelop this important site and would look forward to answering any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. So I'm going to continue on and talk a little bit more about our proposal and the master plans that are before you this evening. So first, I want to talk a little bit about the history of the site. As I mentioned before, the site was previously approved as a Pondview shopping center, and this plan reflects that plan that was previously approved and was currently under construction. All the earthwork activities on the property are being done in accordance with this plan. But what we've done and what we've been doing is working with the owner and their contractors to ensure that the work that they're completing will allow for this proposed development to just slide right into place. There are a number of improvements associated or currently proposing now to what was previously approved. As you can see here on this plan, it shows that 53% of the site previously was approved to be impervious, obviously creating stormwater runoff, which was managed, but it was something that was previously approved. Our current plan actually reduces that to 35% of impervious surface, which allows for much more green space, lawn, and allows for better management of the stormwater management system. Our proposed plan, just to start to dive into it, so as Howard mentioned, and we've talked about, the project includes the construction of eight apartment buildings, a large, highly amenitized clubhouse. We are proposing a total of 380 parking spaces. As part of the SBD process, we are essentially creating our zoning requirements, the MDD adoption established in parameters that we have to live within, but then as part of this process, we define some of those. One of the components that was previously approved with the MDD allowed for a total density or maximum density of 15 minutes per acre. This application actually only proposes 9.5 minutes per acre, so we're coming in below what that previously discussed and approved density was. We wanted to be cognizant of that. MDD allows for a total building coverage of 25%. We're actually only proposing 10.3% coverage with this development. It allows for, you know, with the total building height of about 42 feet. We are proposing two parking spaces per unit, which is more than adequate blend based on the combination of one bedroom and two bedroom units, and allows for ample visitor parking as well. In designing our site, we wanted to make sure we were creating a safe and, you know, a flow for vehicles. We have a large rotary in front of the clubhouse, like we have a nice statue in the middle. As Howard mentioned, this will be gated to ensure that it's safe to all the residents and they have adequate parking located in central locations to accommodate all of the buildings. From amenity standpoint, there's, we've identified dog parks, you know, outdoor dog park, putting green rooms for hammocks, yard games, pools, fire pits, et cetera. We'll talk about those in a little bit more detail. Mary will touch on those. And then we wanted to make sure that we had sidewalks throughout, so that we're creating a nice walkable community that could really be a benefit for residents. From a grading standpoint, we've been able to design the site to actually reduce the overall earthwork that was previously approved in the property. This design actually, it's about approximately a 10%, a little bit less than 10% reduction to overall cut. to overall cut and export from the site. While the current earthwork activities on the property are anticipated to last another, I believe, seven to nine months. If this plan is approved by this commission, it'll actually shorten that timeframe because it'll, we'll be able to adjust their overall rating to reflect the proposed grading plan in front of it. We've been able to design the site to provide stormwater quality enhancements and improvements to the site and actually it's improved with both some above-ground attention in this location here and some below-ground attention underneath the parking lot, which will allow for attenuation of all the peak of stormwater discharge rates for all storm events from the 2-year-old way to the 100-year-old. As part of our proposal, obviously, we understand that, you know, we want to make sure that we're being sensitive to our surrounding environments. One of the benefits of the design of this site is coming in from Route 25. We're obviously sharing that driveway that currently provides access to the Dunkin' Donuts, Baskin Robbins across from Duchess, and the gas station a little bit further on the corner. What we would be proposing is to provide some improvements to that driveway to allow for both the right lane and left lane during movements exiting the site. We would then slightly raise that grade and bring it up to the proposed development. But overall, the site would actually be kind of recessed down in grade when you look at the surrounding community. So what that actually does is it kind of puts us down into a little bit of a hole, which keeps our community kind of more contained, you know, far less impactful in the surrounding areas. And just to kind of demonstrate that, we've done a few sections. So this is the section, and I need to move this building here, which clearly shows the existing topography, existing grade, where our proposed building would be in relation to that, to kind of show that we're kind of down in a hole and, you know, far less impactful and something that could be built up on that existing grade. And the same goes for this section, which runs through this building here. So this is kind of running north to south. And you can see again, one of the things we've done is we've made sure we have adequate room from that rock cut and small retaining wall, which would accommodate this proposed grade change. And we have adequate room in there for catchment area. And then our buildings, again, sit down in relation to some of the surrounding grades off the property. From a, from a utility standpoint, we've been able to design our site with underground utilities from Route 25. Each building will actually have its own septic system. And in accordance with public health requirements, we've done exhaustive testing on the property. The site is, is currently has very good sand to accommodate the septic flow. There's been years and years of testing. I think there's been over 100 test pits on the property. The Jay Keeler, who the commission may remember, he owned this property for a long time, had an engineering firm in town. He recently passed away. He, his nickname was Septic Jay, and he had a knack for septic systems. He exhaustively studied this site. We've been able to work, we were able to work with him for a number of years. We did a number of significant testing with him. And actually, since his passing, we've been working with his widow, Suprina Keeler. Actually, also here with me this evening is great Kamidolsky, who's here on behalf of Suprina. And we've been able to do additional testing. We've done testing with the former sanitarian, the current sanitarian. And we've also had several meetings in coordination with Matthew Pollock from the Department of Public Health. And our proposed utility and septic system has been designed in accordance with their requirements. One component that was included, based on Department of Public Health requirements, the project is proposed to be essentially create independent condominium units for each building. So each building and septic system will be its own condominium unit on its own condominium parcel, all owned and maintained and managed by Mr. Rappaport and Contentful Properties. So there's a central person responsible for the operation and the management of all of these facilities. With that, I'm going to pass it over to Mary from my office. She's going to talk about the landscaping that we propose. We have some renderings depicting the proposed development from Route 25, which she can talk about how the project performs with the P O C D. And then I'll be back up. Thanks.
Thanks, Kevin. So for the record, my name's Mary Blackburn. I'm a registered landscape architect in the state of Connecticut with solely engineering here in Monroe. And I'm going to walk you through the landscape plan. I guess before I get started, the landscape plan isn't just planning. I think it's kind of like another amenity to the site. And it really serves to give the site unity, a sense of place, and makes it a home and accents the buildings and ties everything together. So. And then from Main Street here in Como, the main entry drive. As Kevin said, it's kind of the existing drive here is flat. And as you start to come up here, you're going to come up and you'll get glimpses into, you know, this vista of the lawn with one of the buildings. And you'll come around the corner, and your view kind of gets restricted with the trees. And it opens up to kind of this grand entrance with a turning circle and a piece of artwork and the beautiful proposed clubhouse. And that's going to be surrounded by flower overstory trees. Planting beds with flowering shrubs and perennials. And to enter the site, as you can see, we've provided really generous planting islands. We really want to break up the parking areas. And that allows us to put large overstory trees in the planting islands to reduce the heat island effect, provide shade. And a lot of these buildings, you know, they look out on the parking lot. So we don't want it to be just one large parking area. We want to break that out. And then each of the buildings will have generous foundation plantings. You know, there'll be multi-layered taller shrubs up against the building, going down to like ground cover and perennials. And that really helps make a connection between the parking and the sidewalk and the building. It kind of makes that transition. And then as Kevin said, you know, a lot of the site, we're lucky because, you know, there's wetlands, there's state property. An aquarium owned the property on this side. And then these are all wetlands. These are all existing buffers. But what we're doing is we're really doing more simple buffers. We're providing additional evergreens and then like woodland edge shrubs. And those will be, kind of as you see here. And then as Kevin showed in the section, there's a big rock face that runs along here. So we're going to provide additional buffers up on top of the rock face and down below the rock face, because that'll help soften it. It is a nice feature, but, you know, it's very long length. So breaking it up with evergreens really helps accentuate it. And then again, more buffers along this whole side here. We're going to be also doing buffers along the wetland edge here, and that would kind of help screen the community some people. I think what's also important is obviously it's going to be very amenity. As I said, for outdoor gathering, hammocks, there's a dog park. And everything that you need is going to be, you know, you won't have to leave the site. And, you know, you'll go out to eat and to work. But when you're at home, you kind of have all these great amenities right at your fingertips. And those all work with the planting. Obviously, the pool and the hammock, if you want to get some nice sun. But we repeatedly put understory trees in that area so you have some shade also. And maybe we have, in here, you have a nice focal point of a large evergreen. Around the holidays, you can, you know, dress it up with lights and really make it a community. I need to do the rendering. Where you have the flowering overstory trees and some of the darker green or the evergreens. And then you'll have those cabanas and the umbrellas all around the pool. Probably a bocce ball court, and this is your fire pit with your gathering space. Some cutting leaves, and of course, the dog park, you know, off of this side here. And as Kevin said, you know, there's going to be sidewalks. There's going to be a network of sidewalks for pedestrian connectivity so you can go on walks and jobs and walk your dog. So here's the rendering that we've taken. Kind of right here on Main Street, as you go on south, you're going to see the Dunkin' Donuts. And then you'll get a view of what this building and the clubhouse might look like. And this would be if we had no landscaping, right? If it was wide open, you would see that first residential building, and then you would have your clubhouse in the center here. It's quite a distance off the road, so you're really not going to see it. And now if we add in all of these trees and all of the trees that we're proposing along the entry drive and in front of the clubhouse here, you're really hardly going to see it at all. You know, it's a residential place unless you know it's there. You know, it's not really out in the middle of the road. You know, they want to be set back from the road. And as Kevin said, it's kind of sunk in into the landscape. So with that, I will go into the P O C D and how it conforms with the P O C D. So. One of the things in the new P O C D is, in chapter three, the housing. One of the housing goals is, sorry, the future land use map. So this is the future land use map. And you can see that it's in red. That is supposed to be mixed-use, commercial and residential. So right now, it's largely a commercial corridor. And this will add the much-needed kind of mixed, mix of uses in this area. In chapter three, in the housing goals, the housing goal reads that we need to allow for a wide selection of housing choices that support the retention of residents in Monroe through various stages of life. And we need to attract new residents to the community. And the first strategy that was listed was we need to continue to explore the development of housing in commercial districts through the expansion of mixed-use districts. And this does just that, right? Right now, there's not a great variety of housing options in Monroe. And this will help attract and retain young professionals and empty nesters. It gets them a place to stay more along the lines of what they're, they're looking for, not like a single-family house on one acre of larger site. And then this is also in chapter eight, and it's along those same lines. The focus here is to retain population and expand housing choice. Monroe needs to take measures necessary to retain existing residents and attract and retain young professionals, young residents and seniors. The town's economy, property values, services, and schools are dependent upon its resident population viability. And with that, I will pass it over to Stan from Realty Concepts. Okay. Forward and back.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Stanley Janistowski. I'm president of Realty Concepts Incorporated, located in Gilbert, Connecticut. We're a real estate consulting advisory firm. My background is, I hold counsel in real estate designation. About 1800s of the world have that. Also, CCIEM designation, which is a real estate education designation. Just retired after 25 years at York University in what's now known as the Shaq Institute of Real Estate, where I was teaching the method analysis, remark analysis, cap analysis, and impact analysis as we have in front of us here. The, keep in mind one thing, that this analysis was done as of January 7th, 2022. And things have changed a little bit. It's never static. It's a dynamic type of market that we're in right now. Where's the enter button you said?
Uh, that arrow.
Arrow, yeah. I went the wrong way. Okay. Just to review, I have the same data that was just presented to you. I'm a laborer, but we have, I study, I know it's 180 units, 76 one-bedroom units, 112 two-bedroom units, clubhouse, poolhouse, maintenance building, 381 surface parking spaces, private maintained roads and trash removal. So there's no, no burden on the town when it comes to road maintenance, lighting, or when it comes to trash removal. Also, Howard mentioned, but I have to emphasize that the professional experience, property management means that property control. So when there's an issue on the site, typically an apartment's property manager or the owner of the complex to resolve issues faster than a lot of other issues. That would be, say, on a town, they control the property. And they can enforce the rules, regulations that the tenants have to go by when they sign the lease. And with high-quality property management and with the attention that is paid by Mr. Rappaport and his company, you have the propensity to have higher property values. So the value of the property stays high, which is a benefit to the town and to the taxation. Again, that's a subject site that was just brought to you by Mary and Kevin. The method of analysis that I did was I performed the market analysis to look at the market. I looked at the site, visited the site. Did a political analysis, what I mean is zoning. And Mary just went over the plan of conservation and development. So this site does address the issues in the P O C D. And financial analysis is the culmination to see if the site is feasible, which it is. My assignment was based on your new zoning regulations, where I had to address a number of issues. I had to do a fiscal impact assessment to study their overall municipal budget services, which includes analyzing the demand for apartments in the municipality, which I addressed, analyzing the likely number of school-aged children, likely impact on municipal services included but not rooted to police, fire, EMS, and public works. And the net fiscal impact, which would include tax generation and cost to the municipality for different services. So current demand does exist for apartments in Monroe. It's supported by lifestyle analysis, millennials, Gen X, and senior population, which is on page 44 of my report, which has been presented to you. What do we mean by that? Well, everything is a lifestyle change, okay? She's sitting here with a cup of Dunkin' Donuts. People have bottles of water. That's a lifestyle change. Where the lifestyle change is present here is that the demand for apartments has increased because of lifestyle change. The millennials and Gen X and now some senior citizens are looking for places to live within the community rather than taking care of the property that they have as a single-family home. Also, Monroe had a pop, Fairfield County had a population increase of about 40,000 in Monroe. Based on the 2020 census, this is new data. The population decrease from 2010 to 2020 went down to 19,000 to about 18,000, about 0.34%. But that has probably changed since then because now we have a number of people that are coming into the area because of COVID and the impact that that has. This may not reflect all those numbers. Also, the apartment trade area, which is really from Route 15 coming north and over to the Fairfield line and over to the Muscatonic River, is about, and it's called Fairfield East, is the county is the apartment trade area that you're in. And the Fairfield East Apartment Trade Area, the vacancy rate when I did the report was 6.8%. Today it's 7.1. It fluctuates up and down. It's like a yo-yo, it goes up and down. And that's predominantly due to introduction of some new apartments into the marketplace. Also, market rent average. When I did the report in January, the average rent was, for the Fairfield East, was $1,918. Today it's $1,944. So rent levels have increased. I also took a look and broke down the lifestyle. And Monroe is basically comprised of four lifestyles, which is kind of unique. Usually you get more than that. There's only one other town that I know that I know. There's only one other town that I know that's quite unique, and that's Oxford. They only have one lifestyle. Where does this information come from? It comes from Ed Street, which is the ten thousand pound gorilla for demographics and data. And what I did, I took each of the lifestyles and I broke down the percent of each lifestyle that represents the population and multiplied it times the data that is provided by the lifestyle analysis, the propensity to rent. And what I was able to discover, there's about, I can't see that because of my glasses, about two thousand four hundred or ten residents in town that would be potential renters. That doesn't mean that everybody's gonna rent. It's just that that particular lifestyle has the propensity to rent, okay? And of that, you're not gonna have two thousand people coming in to rent right now. It's gonna be some number less than that, but there is demand. And there's probably a good number, about a thousand people that would probably rent. You have lifestyle changes that foster that, okay? So there is demand for apartments. That's the first question that you have for letter I. Next thing I want to address is that Monroe currently only has, based on the most recent data, which is the twenty twenty Affordable Housing Appeals List, only has one point four five percent of its housing stock that is affordable. The goal for the state of Connecticut is ten percent. The subject property will provide about nineteen affordable market rate rental units, okay? That will be affordable, will come under the affordable category. So that helps Monroe address getting to the goal of ten percent. So affordable housing is an important component and a very important marketing feature for this complex and to address some of the needs of the residents of Monroe. School ratings, too. This has been brought up in the past when I've talked to the town. And, you know, this thing changes like a yo-yo, okay? When we were here the last time, you were up in the top four or five. And this is from Niche in January of twenty twenty-two. And currently Monroe is ranked at nineteen. Don't look at the ranking. What you want to look at are a couple of things here, okay? Number one, all right? And I circled Glastonbury because the lifestyle and the type, the community itself are very similar, okay? Very similar in nature. I had to compare it to something. And the other thing we want to look at, we'll come back to Glastonbury in a minute, but take a look at the graduate percentage, the number of people that graduate. Most of them are in the ninety-eight, ninety-six area. Monroe is ninety-eight percent. And if I go lower than that, below that, if I pulled out numbers below ranking, they're all in the ninety-eight, ninety-six, ninety-seven percent graduate level. So the disparity between the top ranked school and lower ranked schools in Monroe are about the same for the graduation rate. So that's very good. That speaks well with Monroe. I did find an article today that came out that showed that Monroe's grammar schools were ranked pretty high at about five or six, somewhere in that area, okay? So that's the first thing I wanted to point out. The second thing to point out here is we take a look at the teacher-student ratio. Based on this analysis by Niche, you can see that the range is between thirteen point one for Monroe and the lowest one is about eleven point one. The average for the state of Connecticut, student-teacher ratio is twelve. That was the last bit of data I have from the Department of Education. It's about twelve. So Monroe is right in there. You're in the top rankings, the school system's good, yes. But you also compare it to the other towns that have apartments, okay? Same thing. All right. I did a six-year school district analysis, okay? The data from, for the first five years here was from the state Department of Education. Where do they get that information from? That information is provided by your school board. Your school board was very cooperative and they gave me the recent data, which hasn't been published yet, which is this column right here, okay? And then the only columns, the only rows that are questionable are these three down here, which are staffs, which is maintenance and things like that. That number hadn't been calculated yet, so it's a little bit different, okay? But the numbers relating to the number of school, number of teachers, the special ed teachers, aides, that is correct and has been submitted to the state for publication and just not out yet. So when I break this down, you can see, and I can't see that from here, I'm sorry. Just have to look here. If you look at this first chart right here, you can see that the current student population is about three thousand three hundred and forty-five students. It went from three thousand one hundred and thirty-six students. So there was an increase of a little bit over two hundred students in one year, okay? And that's important to take note as we go to the next slide. And again, the student-teacher ratio that I've calculated, again, for just teachers is thirteen point six eight, thirteen point nine nine. If I include special ed teachers, it goes down a little bit, but I'm just looking at the general education teachers at this point, okay? Now, when we look at the next slide, okay? It gives us more information. And what I want to point out is that we had an increase of two hundred and nine students, okay? Which the school system hired eighteen point nine five, that's hundred and nine point nine five people, but full-time equivalent is what they use. And that gives us a ratio of eleven point three oh three for the ratios for student-teachers. Keep that in mind because it comes up again on the slide later, all right? Also, that's Stephanie. And the question was, well, how many students would there be in Stephanie? And Stephanie has right now, if we look at it back in twenty fourteen, it was at the peak. And that was a total of four hundred and seventy-four students at the peak. Today, okay, based on your Board of Education, there are four hundred and fifty-six students that are at Stephanie. Now, everything is done as of October first of every year. That's how we measure this, okay? Just to keep that in mind. All right, so Stephanie still has some capacity to get to the peak that it was back in twenty fourteen. As you can see, over the subsequent years after twenty fourteen, it's gone down and it's come back up. So again, it's like a yo-yo. All right. I was questioned in the past as to, you know, there's nothing comparable in Monroe. The only thing I could find in Monroe was Northbrook condominiums, okay? So I took a look at Northbrook condominiums. First of all, there's three hundred and nineteen one and two bedroom units there. They have currently fifty-two public school age children. Students attend five of five Monroe schools. Five of five Monroe schools. The other thing to keep in mind is that condominium owners have a longer tenure of ownership than people staying in apartments. They are raising their family there. They stay there longer. They have the propensity to have more children. Keep in mind something else, that the birth rate has dropped from about twenty-nine down to twenty-six. And what happens is by the time the children become six, seven years of age, that's the sweet spot that the millennials and start to look to move on to get a single family residence or condo. Lifestyle, lifestyle will probably lead them more towards a condominium lifestyle because they like living in apartments. They don't want the responsibility of a lot of maintenance, which is the case for other lifestyle changes also. Again, family, and it's really not comparable, it's really not comparable to market rate apartments. But it gives us some indication what would happen for one and two bedroom apartments. It would be less in apartments. The other thing I want to point out is that when we look at the matrix over here, you can see that about, it's forty percent, about forty percent of the children that live at Northbrook attend elementary school. The rest of them go to the middle school or to the high school. So when we, when I come up with a number of the estimated public school age children, that doesn't mean that a hundred percent of them are gonna go to Stephanie. They're gonna, some are gonna go to Stephanie, some are gonna go to the middle school, some will go to the high school. It's just the way it is. Sometimes it's more one, less of another. So that's an important depth to look at. That gives us some indication of what may happen in an apartment complex. So similar market rate apartments. And when I did a similar market rate apartments, and what I did was, I looked at particularly Glastonbury down the bottom here because of lifestyle, see what they have. You can see the ratios here, but I couldn't find any new construction projects that really would represent what would happen in Monroe. Now, one hundred Oakview right here, ten trouble, that's a different apartment trade area. Like I said, south of fifteen is a different apartment trade area. It serves more of the Bridgeport, the lower Fairfield County. Coming north of Route fifteen, it's a different apartment style. And if you look at particularly, let's see, where is it? Oakview Sheldon. If you look at the mark that's there, that has a ratio of point oh seven nine, where trouble had a higher ratio. And after analyzing this and looking at it, looking at the rent range and looking at the year built, all the information, it's my professional opinion that the ratio for Monroe would be about point zero nine students per unit. And if I multiply that times one hundred eighty-eight units, that will give me about sixteen point nine two. So let's say seventeen school age children, all right? From the analysis, the matrix before, if we use that eleven point oh three I talked about, okay? And multiplied times seventeen, that would tell me that I would need approximately two teachers due to the development of this project. Possibly, it may not be. But let's say if due to this project, we would get two new teachers. So what I looked at also was the net fiscal impact. I looked, talked to the different departments and I followed. First of all, the police department could not give me a firm answer. They couldn't tell me what the impact was going to be. They couldn't tell me how many calls. They couldn't tell me, you know, what the impact would be on their manpower and or equipment. Same thing held true for EMS. And they could not tell me what the impact would be. So I allocated twenty-five thousand dollars to each of those departments for potential costs. I did talk to the public works and the only cost for the public works would be that you control here in the town is the recycling. And that was, he gave me a firm estimate of ten thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars. I talked to the fire department. There is no impact, according to the fire marshal. He saw no impact due to the complex. And the last one, of course, education, we said two new teachers. What I did, I looked at the salary and benefits and multiplied it times two and I rounded it to two hundred and seven thousand five hundred dollars for two new teachers, okay? If you multiply, divide that by seventeen, it's about twelve thousand dollars per student. A little more than that. Then I did my fiscal impact. What would be the revenue? Well, I took the estimate for one bedroom with two bedroom units with the cost, the final cost would be, including the land, came up with a project's estimated value of about thirty-eight million, almost thirty-nine, thirty-nine million dollars. I took seventy percent of that, which is taxable, at the mill rate, and that gave me revenue of nine hundred and sixty-five thousand five fifty, okay? I then took another thing that most people forget, is personal property. When you have an apartment complex, the residents have cars. You pay tax on it. I got this recent number for the value of a car, twenty-two thousand dollars as an average value of a car in the state of Connecticut, okay? So that's what I used. So that could be up or down a little bit, but that's only, that's an estimate, which came from a source. I then took the one bedroom units. I say, well, each one bedroom unit would have one point seven five cars. Each two bedroom unit would have two cars. That gave us total autos of three hundred and fifty-seven. At that value, gave us the total value at seventy percent. And at the mill rate, that generated about a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars in tax revenue. Was it one ninety-five? Yeah, one ninety-five, okay? I can't see that far anymore, okay? And then, so when I added it all up, I had total revenue of one million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven twelve, about that number. I then went and did my estimate, took the estimates I did for the cost. I had total education cost of two hundred and seven thousand, five hundred. I had fire, there was none. Police and EMS, I had allocated twenty-five thousand. Public works was the ten thousand, six forty-nine. And additional town services, I estimated about twenty-five thousand. That gave me two hundred and ninety-three thousand, one forty-nine for expenses, I'm sorry. And that gave me a total of about net positive tax revenue to the town of eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, five sixty-three, okay? So you're gonna generate about eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars if the project was in place as of today, all right? That is my presentation. Per year, per year, yes, per year.
Yes, you're a hundred percent correct, but that also includes that every place is a hundred percent rented. That includes that, that you're only asking for seventeen children to go to school. That's asking that we're not adding police. I mean, the numbers sound great, but.
Well, the data is directly from your school board, okay? And I've done a number of these. And every time I do.
I don't doubt it.
Every time I do it, the numbers after the project is in place, pretty close. It may be higher, it may be lower, but it's like a yo-yo over time. It's like, it's a wave in the ocean. That school count's gonna go up and it's gonna go down, okay? Oh, one other thing I wanted to point out. The two bedroom units, because of lifestyle change and because of COVID, the propensity for both bedrooms being utilized as bedrooms is starting to decrease. Because of COVID, what we're finding is people coming in, renting a two bedroom unit and taking the second bedroom and having it their office, okay? There was a project that we looked at up north that had about a hundred units. There was a number of people, there was about thirty-six percent of the units that were being utilized were not utilizing the second bedroom. So that's data that's out there. That data is starting to come in, National Home Builders Association, National Partner Associates, your rent, yeah, sure. The National Multi-Housing Council is starting to develop that data. They're finding that the second bedroom is being used for office, okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. You know, one other interesting point that I wanted to make is part of Stan's analysis and study, you know, happens actually has to do with some of the statistics from Northbrook. Excuse me, from Northbrook. So, you know, part of the concern and the fear is, okay, we create these units, it's gonna create an impact on the schools, right? And it's gonna generate school kids. What's that do to the capacity? What do we do to that? Teachers, I have three young people in the school system, Faun Hollow, right? How does that impact, you know, my children's ability to get the attention that they need to grow and to develop? One of the interesting components that I think we're seeing in these types of developments is that, you know, the residents who live there, as we've talked about, they're not necessarily all net new to the community. Because what happens in a lot of instances is you have families, you know, there could be a divorce, someone may have to move. And I think the data from Northbrook supports that because what you see with Northbrook is while there are twenty-one elementary school children who live in Northbrook, Northbrook is in the Stephanie School District. But if you look at the statistics, there are sixteen kids in Stephanie, two in Monroe L, and three in Faun Hollow. Because what happens is you live in the community, you go to Faun Hollow or you go to Monroe L, you happen to have a life event, maybe parents get divorced, something else, you then move to Northbrook. You can still elect to go to your same school. So of all the school kids in Northbrook, those aren't necessarily net new kids to the district. There are kids who are already in the community, they're already in the district. They simply now moved to a different location and they're still have the ability to go to that same school. So while we talk about the total school age that lives in these populations and we look at our generation estimates, the reality is, we don't even actually believe they'd be net new to the school, but our analysis was done as if it was net new to the school. And to the, you know, to the point about the questions regarding the impact on the schools and things like that and the net benefit to the community, even if we were to double our estimated cost, this would still result in a net impact and a net gain from a taxable increase to the grant list. from a taxable increase to the grant list of over half a million dollars. So just one interesting point that I wanted to note that I noticed in the numbers from Northbrook because it is, it does kind of reinforce a lot of what we're seeing anecdotally with people that are in the community, that something happens and they have to move, but they want to stay in Monroe. This gives them opportunity to do that. So Stan went through his, I'll just summarize your conclusion, Stan, because you missed this last one, but it's okay. There's a lot of text up here, but I think if you saw his report, it was very comprehensive and we obviously welcome the questions and the discussion. But, you know, there's definitely a demand for this type of unit to provide this additional housing stock, we believe, in the community. The, you know, the target market and the income level, we think is going to be, you know, the net worth should meet the threshold income level to rent the proposed contemporary apartment community. The market rank is approximately 1,900 per unit plus utilities for one bedroom and $2,200 per month plus utilities for a two bedroom. You know, this highly utilized apartment community will really kind of create a very attractive alternative housing option for the town. As we mentioned, and included in the MDD, we are proposing to have 10% of the units be restricted affordable, which again will create an opportunity to allow for affordable units to be available to local schoolteachers, municipal employees, things like that. And it'll help with that affordable housing number that the town obviously is striving for. This meets the, this meets and will be eligible, obviously, for the affordable housing plan that the commission is working on, on which I believe we have a workshop in April. This will help achieve those goals. And again, I think this, you know, I think what Stan's analysis does, does show a very positive net tax revenue impact to the community, namely with the double our estimates. So, you know, included, we obviously had a lot of information included in our special development district. One, one of the other requirements that was included as part of the MDD was a detailed traffic impact analysis. To really understand if this project, you know, was going to have an impact on the surrounding roadway network and to make sure that this can accommodate this development. So one of the things that we looked at, so we prepared a traffic impact study. We submitted it as part of the record. And these types of developments are actually really good from a traffic standpoint because their trip generation is relatively low. With the 188 units, all projects are only generating, you know, we look at the morning peak period during rush hour and the afternoon rush hour, essentially, you know, when this community, majority of the trips would come in and out of the development. In the morning peak hour, this would actually only generate 68 total trips, new trips to the network. So that's 18 coming in and 50 leaving. And then during the afternoon peak period, so that, you know, afternoon rush hour, we would estimate it to be 83 trips, 50 trips coming in. You know, and, you know, what we did from our traffic study, we analyzed the existing conditions at some of the surrounding intersections. We looked at our trip generation, we applied those to the network and analyzed what operated in the future and those all would maintain across the service. One of the biggest things that we looked at though, was when you look at what was previously approved by the commission with that shopping center, the potential traffic impact associated with that was much more. It had, you know, total new trips of 288 in the morning, 953 during the afternoon peak, and 1,056 on Saturday. So that actually, if this SDD is approved, it would actually represent a net reduction of 76% reduction of new trips in the morning peak from what was previously approved, 91% reduction in the afternoon peak of what was previously approved, the 92% reduction of what was previously approved for that Saturday midday peak. So you think that from a, from a land use standpoint, from a traffic generation standpoint, from a traffic impact standpoint, this proposed community would be far less impactful than what's previously been approved on the property. And I think our traffic study demonstrates that obviously the surrounding roadway network can accommodate those trips. You know, with that, I think, Howard, we were back to you. If you wanted to provide some closing remarks and then we can open it up to the commission for questions.
Yeah. Thank you, Kevin. I trust that you can hear me okay? So just like to follow, a few follow-up comments to Stan's presentation. He's presented certainly a comprehensive analysis of our proposed community, a lot of data and a lot of facts from his perspective. As a long-term owner of similar communities of the quality and the scale and the scope that we're proposing here in Monroe, I can confirm to you that our real world experience is consistent with the conclusions in Stan's analysis. The demographics in our community are that of, our communities are that are an intergenerational nature. Our residents in our communities are a vibrant mix of young professionals, empty nesters, and the so-called cohort called suddenly singles. Our proposed community provides another housing opportunity for your residents to stay in town and be close to their families, their doctors, and their houses of worship. The prospective residents here would be attracted to the range and the quality of the amenities, particularly now post-COVID, where people do more from home. And I think we've represented the true Class A nature of this community. And we're excited to be before you and look forward to developing and operating a very dynamic, modern rental community that will be an asset to your town. Kevin, that's my summary. We appreciate the opportunity to present tonight.
Thanks, Howard. So now I think, you know, that summarized our presentation. I think our proposed special development district, you know, is consistent with the MBD regulations, which the commission adopted. We've shown how it conforms with the POCD. And I think our overall master, schematic master plans and, you know, the rest of the details spelled out in that SDD, you know, we think we get all those guidelines. You know, so with that, I think we'd be happy to answer any of the questions that the commission may have.
Right. Well, let's start with the commissioners on my left.
Well, thank you, everyone, for the presentation. I can tell you put a lot of time and effort, especially into the impact analysis. Thank you. And you answered most of my questions. I just wanted to clarify a few things. And I still got commercial. I'm only a commissioner, I'm also the Stephanie PTO president. So I just wanted to update the numbers a little bit and just clarify them. We currently have, I think you said 456. As of today, or this week, our last meeting, we had 473. So we're back up to the peak we were at in 2014.
Can I clarify?
Yeah, of course.
Everything was done as of October.
Yeah.
That's the benchmark that the state uses and that's what I use. And like I said, it goes up and it goes down.
Oh, yeah, of course. I just wanted to make sure, I just want to clarify some numbers. So we have 473 kids. The 11 to 1 ratio, just to be clear, isn't the teacher to student ratio. It's the number of certified staff. So it's the gym teacher, it's the secretaries, it's the librarian. So that's where you get the 11 to 1. The actual classroom ratio at Stephanie right now is running 20 to 1, 24 to 1. And with very limited other classrooms to move into. I know Fawn Hollow's up to almost 700 kids. And Monroel's around 300. So all the schools are crunched. I would just like to maybe talk with the Board of Ed or talk with them to see what it would cost if we had to redistrict. I understand only 17 maybe kids will come out of this. Could be more, it could be less. But the town is really, the Board of Ed right now is extremely stressed with, with the budget and finding room for everyone. So I just want to make sure everyone understands. It's not 11 kids to one teacher, it's like 20 to 24.
A big number.
It's a big number. And then it's about $18,000 a year to, for each student. So if you have the 17 children about, that's $306,000 out of that 863 potential tax to the town. So a big chunk of that tax is coming to us, is going to go to the Board of Ed. But I would like to talk, you know, know from the Board of Ed as well, if we do have to redistrict, because I do love this plan. I think the town needs this. I am in agreement with this kind of development. From everything from the recently graduated to the suddenly single, I love that. To the people that don't want the big house anymore. I just want to make sure we keep the schools really in line here. So that was, those are my only comments. Okay, one more. I know our police and EMS didn't really have any feedback for you, Stan. Did other towns, like Shelton and Trumbull that have similar, were they able to give you any feedback as to how often they have calls there and what their numbers are?
I didn't do that. I was hoping that the police department and EMS would call other municipalities to get that data.
Okay.
So this way I can rely and they can be comfortable with those numbers. Other presentations that I made, like this in other towns, say Trumbull, the response has been similar. There are other property types that have greater demand for police services, but this partners typically aren't one of them. Okay?
Okay.
The only other thing I'd like to address and correct you on is that you, yeah, if you take that 18,000, it's the differential between the 207 and the 300 and change you came up with, that you deduct from the number I came up with. So it's not a $300,000, $1,000, it's about $140,000 deduction.
Yeah. Stand that aside, 207,000.
Okay.
Education.
Gotcha, thank you.
If you were to apply that 18,000 per student,
Yeah.
I think it'd be an extra $160,000.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the number the state comes in with all the rents and the adjustments. I was looking at the pure cost of the teacher. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Commissioner, my name is...
Yay. All right. I have a couple of questions. One, I know we're still far away from, from, from all this, but would you propose a traffic light at the bottom of, on the entrance here?
We would not, we wouldn't.
You don't think you need one?
We wouldn't meet the warrants, for one. As part of, you know, the DOT's consideration for new traffic signals, they look at, there's a number of warrants that are established by the MUTC, Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices. What the DOT looks for is a minimum of eight hours that you meet the peak thresholds. And that's based on the main line volumes, then the volumes on the minor approach. Considering that the peak hour generation for a project like this is so minimal, we wouldn't meet the peak hour warrants for that eight hour period for the DOT even to allow us to install a signal. I think as part of the previous approval, they had been anticipating that. I'll say that just given the proximity between the existing signal to the north and this, it likely had to be on a shared controller. Those are somewhat challenging to coordinate. But I think this project actually, with the minimal trip generation, does require it.
Sorry, we have to get the state traffic as the commission does.
Additionally, projects of this size do require approval, you know, any project over 100 residential units, they consider a major traffic generator. So that has an additional approval with the Office of State Traffic Administration. So this project will have an additional layer of permitting with the DOT. As I mentioned, we would be proposing to actually widen that driveway right now. It's just a single lane out, so take a right or a left, just one lane. We'd propose that state has to have a dedicated right turn lane and a left turn lane. And that in itself would, not only would we have a review with the DOT in New England, we'd also have an encroachment permit process with the district office in Haven. It would be additional review from a traffic standpoint with the DOT.
Can I finish? And I said, I was going to ask.
Yeah, every time.
I thought you were there. Every time. Okay. So I get that, that's fine. Coming up that driveway, what's your... Coming up that driveway, I like the landscape plan that's being proposed. I'm assuming you're going to have some sort of lighting going up that way? Or is it going to stay in the dark?
We would, yeah, we'd likely propose some lighting along that drive.
Okay. So what's it going to look like?
Well, I mean, that lighting would be, it would be dark sky compliant. It would be in a nature that's, you know, consistent with the building. As part of the SDD process, that wasn't, a lighting plan wasn't something that would require. We're happy to provide that to the commission for consideration as part of this project to show what we would be proposing from a lighting standpoint.
I would think that you would want to show, I mean, at least for me, I would like to see something just because you're doing a really, really nice job with the, with the landscape plan. So I'd like to see how you do incorporate the lighting into going up that way. I mean, I don't know what the other commissioners feel, but I would like, I mean, just me personally, I would like to see something. So I think that would be pretty nice. Also, you talked about two parking spaces per unit. And then you also said there's visitor parking spaces, correct?
Well, the two parking spaces per unit incorporates additional parking for visitors. So what we found, and I think...
Okay, so if I live there and I have two cars, I can't have any visitors?
It's more of...
First come, first served?
It's more of an overall development standpoint, right? So if we were to provide...
There's no...
Spaces are numbered.
Spaces are numbered, they're open spaces. So anyone can park as they want.
Anywhere.
Yes. So the overall account of two spaces per unit takes into consideration that's open, one bedroom and two bedrooms. And that it allows for, you know, if, if some of the two bedroom unit had two cars, there'd still be more than enough parking to accommodate the two spaces.
Not really. Because at two bedrooms, at two, at two spaces per, at two spaces per parking space that you're, that you're proposing is 376. You're only proposing to do 381. Is there any staff that works at this, at this facility?
Kevin, can I speak to this, Kevin?
Yes, please.
Hi. This is Howard Rappaport again, for the record. So normally, we're very, very cognizant of these issues that you're raising because the only thing worse than getting a denial is building a community with insufficient parking. And I've had, I've had communities where we have to add parking. So I, I'm acutely aware of the concerns you're articulating. Normally, let me tell you the way we get the two spaces per unit. In most of our communities, we calculate two spaces for a two bedroom. On average, 1.5 for a one bedroom and 0.3 for a visitor. So that really, what we think of it as is 1.8 for a one when we're adding in the visitor and two for a two. Here in this community, we're, we're two spaces overall, which is more than I have in, in many of my communities. It's consistent with what I have in Trumbull. It's more than what I have in Shelton, Rocky Hill, South Windsor. And it's the same as what we have in Milford. And we have found that.
Mr. Rappaport, that's awesome. I really don't care what you have in the other towns. I'm mostly concerned about Monroe. Hence why you're here in Monroe. That's where I live, is Monroe. I'm just really concerned about here and how, how you're going to go about it here.
And I understand, I'm just giving you our operational experience with parking.
I get it.
That's what I'm trying to do. That's all I'm trying to do. I understand this is Monroe, certainly.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just to touch on parking, you know, one of the things we include in our analysis is in addition to obviously empirical information by operators, we also have some other tools that will get to support our parking. And that's the Urban Land Institute has a, has recommended parking ratios. And the Institute of Transportation Engineers also has recommended parking ratios. We included it in our, in our analysis, but the ITE parking generation and the ULI shared parking data, ITE establishes rates of 1.31 parking spaces per unit for a peak period. And ULI recommends a peak of 1.65 spaces per two bedroom units with additional, and .9 spaces per unit for one bedroom units with additional .1 parking spaces per unit for visitors. So as Howard mentioned, and I think what we propose, we do believe we provide sufficient parking. But we certainly appreciate the...
No, I'm just saying, like, the numbers just don't really add up in my head because if they have some employees that are working there...
Well, I think maybe that's one thing that Howard didn't mention. Are your, are your clubhouses typically, what would you, what's your typical employee count at a facility such as this and what would you expect that to...
Sure. Let me just, let me just think about it for a second so I can give you a thoughtful answer. One, two, three. With our maintenance staff and our leasing staff, I would expect around six employees.
Okay. So again, if we're giving one space, if we're giving two spaces to everyone, you're at 376. That leaves you five spaces to get you to 381 that you're proposing. And if you have six staff members, we're at 382.
So if I could respond to that, the, our operational experience is that... the, our operational experience is that the two bedrooms don't all have two space, a need for two spaces. Many of them are one and some of them are two. And that's why we, we utilize the average, which historically we have found to be accurate, of 1.5. I would agree. If every one bedroom had two, needed two spaces.
Okay, so all I'm saying is if we're going to go ahead and we're going to go ahead and talk about the economic impact that this is going to have to our town financially at fully booked, why can't we talk about the fully, if we're giving everybody the same on the parking? That's all I'm saying. Like, listen, if 381 spaces is what the regulation requires and gives you and it's fine, it's fine by me. I'm just looking at it as what if everybody has two cars? Which most people do have. Every person that would live somewhere has a car. And if they're going to have a student that goes to high school, then maybe they're going to have three cars with a husband, a wife, and a, and a child. That's three cars. I'm just looking at, and then you're going to have six employees working there. There's got to be some sort of delivery that comes here, right? Like you have pool maintenance, so are, are we having any kind of deliveries coming to this facility? Is there, is there a restaurant at this facility?
There's no restaurant.
No restaurant. Okay, so you, so there's no deliveries whatsoever at this facility for anything?
Well, there's deliveries for supplies, certainly. Amazon, and there, there are deliveries.
And they have a spot, so they would just put themselves wherever?
We, we have, we've identified some areas for, for those operations around the clubhouse, you know, kind of drop-off areas and things like that.
Okay, so if Amazon comes there, they're dropping off at a central location? They're not going to the person's-
That's correct. And there's a centralized package room within the clubhouse.
I like that.
So all those people can kind of come and grab it. Same with mail.
So with their mail, they go to a little lockbox and that makes sense.
But I think to your, to your point, Commissioner Mahaney, you know, we're, we're certainly confident that the number proposed is good. And obviously from a regulation standpoint, one of the things about the, the SDD is we get to propose what we believe the correct parking requirement to be. If there's concern from the commission, I think we have more than adequate space on site where if we need to look at adding some additional spaces to satisfy your concerns, we can certainly do that.
I would just hate a beautiful project to come into town and then there's, there's people going on Facebook saying, hey, they built this beautiful facility and there's nowhere to park. Cause you can't get in line at McDonald's and, and there's, there's 5,000 emails going through about McDonald's.
Yeah.
Could you imagine a beautiful facility where you can't get anywhere to park?
So we can, so we can take a look at that.
I'm just saying, like, the numbers my, the numbers that you're proposing don't add up in my, at least from my calculations.
And I would agree too, because it is such a beautiful facility. I'm going to safely assume people are going to have friends over, family over. They're going to utilize those open spaces to have parties. And in any of the other properties you own, do you ever come across that? Where someone's on the weekends, the parties, the pool? I mean, people are going to have friends over to show off this beautiful place, so.
Absolutely. There are absolutely going to be visitors and that's, we find that the, I know I'm talking abstract numbers, so it doesn't, it may not help. But we find that that calculation of 0.3 spaces overall per unit accommodates for that. Would I, I would say, you know, could there be a time at the holiday season where someone has a large holiday party and it becomes problematic once in a while? But I have experienced exactly the Facebook problem that you were describing at a community where I had to figure out a way to buy more land essentially to add in parking. So it's not, this is not a theoretical problem to me. And happy to take a look at adding some more parking if that will give you more comfort because parking is, is absolutely critical.
So like-
Howard, why don't we go back and study it and we'll report it.
My only thought is like you have, I, I mean, I, obviously I don't know if the, when, when the, when the site work is done, if you're going to have space, but like per se, like behind the dog park over there.
We can-
Could you put like a little, a little road in there with a car? I mean, if you, I, I'm just, I would just hate to hear a, 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 a Facebook message about-
I, I think we can look at-
Something minute as parking.
I think we can look at a couple of different opportunities here. We can look to see how we can add some additional parking spaces built into the, the design itself. And we can also identify surplus parking that could be, you know, prepared and maybe activated in the future if that, if that demand was ever so real.
I'm just saying, not for nothing, like, like being a divorced father, I have a daughter who drives, a son who's about to drive. They all, you know, you know, being in Monroe, you, you kind of-
Have to.
You, everybody has to have their own car. And God forbid my son and daughter share a car. You know, so you got, I'm, I live alone and I got three cars in my driveway. So my, my concern is the numbers don't add up and that's just where I'm-
It's a valid concern. We appreciate it.
Where, um, where are you putting the, I'm assuming there's going to be a centralized garbage area? Okay. And you, and I'm assuming with Scott, you've worked in the, uh, easy in and out for a truck to-
Yep. We, we, you know, we, we've looked at the, the overall site circulation. We've looked at turn radii for fire and things like that in emergency vehicles. And we've certainly looked at how that trash maintenance room would be managed and, and, and from a trash standpoint. So we have looked at that and incorporated that into our design.
And I'm assuming all the, all the, all the buildings have handicap accessible and all that kind of stuff.
Absolutely.
Mary, step up. I have a question for you. Yeah, it has to be. So in the front, in the front, so that row of trees.
On the north.
Sure. Where, where's the north side? Yes. Nope, the other ones. In front of that is what?
That is an existing wetland and you can actually see it in our rendering.
Yeah, the view of the driveway, I think.
I know. Right, it's right there to the left. It has all that overgrown grass.
Naturalized wetland.
Right. Now, I'm assuming we're not, we're not doing anything with that. It's going to stay-
Correct.
As is. That's unfortunate.
It's a wetland.
I understand it's wetlands, but I just, this-
And it's actually governed under conservation amendment too as well.
That's so ugly. Yeah, okay, I was just wondering. Plant something in there, at least, niceen it up a little bit.
But there is a hill behind it and that's certainly-
I know, but when you're driving on 25, it's just so hideous.
I, I think one thing we probably didn't incorporate into this rendering that we would is that I think there's an opportunity to, there's, there's an area to the left of the engine drive, which could certainly be cleaned up, manicured to kind of create-
Yeah, but I was just talking more about-
Much broader.
Yeah, that's so ugly.
Like to the left.
Right. I, I, I just-
Sorry about the stuff.
I know.
Stuff right past their stomachs.
All right, I'm, I'm pretty much done for now. Thank you.
Just one point though, you know, I will say that we could, well, yeah, thank you. Sorry. Mr. Ambrose.
Are you? Is there a potential that they're going to, the state is going to require you to put another lane in here?
Not on 25, no. The, you know, the northbound lane for 25, it's sufficient with, there's a bypass lane there.
There is enough room for a bypass lane there?
Yeah. But whatever they require will have to comply with.
Okay, that's what's my concern was like. The other question I have to, how many of these do you, does he own already of this?
Howard? Question was how many of these facilities currently own?
In, well, we own 21 of these. In Connecticut, we own seven of these.
All right, and they're all rentals?
They're all rentals. That's right.
And so what's the average about, you know, would school children stay in, for how long, do you know? For the people?
It, it's not very long, actually. People, on, on average, the turnover at, at non-age restricted communities like the- that, that the total number of units usually turnover about 40% a year. So normally what will happen is you'll have some people who move in with very young children. And by the time that their kids get to grade school, they will, they will usually look for a different form of housing. Particularly here because these are three-story walk-ups. So they're not elevated. And that generally, and the rents are, you know, are, you know, they're not inexpensive. So the combination of that is such that people, pardon me, residents usually don't, the children don't stay very long.
Okay, I have one question. Again, your sidewalks, you going to end them? Or you going to go all the way down?
We're showing sidewalks all the way down to Route 25 and then to provide that connect-
No, we got to go across 25, Route 25?
Along Route 20.
Case, you want to visit those wetlands?
It's, it's certainly something that, you know, we, we weren't proposing sidewalk along the front edge, but this commission obviously has the ability to acquire them.
Actually, what's the shelf station right there is? Shelf station. That's the-
Here?
For you.
That's the one we have to. That's the one with, it's got the taco place?
Yes.
You might want to put it outside.
Right.
Shelf station.
You might want to lock that.
Okay, wait a minute. Commissioner Ambrose. Oh, sorry. I like your sidewalk idea.
Yeah, I, I think that we should put, and what kind of sidewalk would you put in there?
Standard DOT concrete sidewalk.
You don't think that you would like to, I mean, this is like a pretty nice project here. You don't think you would like to make it like brick walk or?
You know, I think generally, you know, we, we, I, I don't think the entirety of the project requires that, or especially along the front edge. I think you can certainly provide those accommodations with the standard concrete sidewalk. You know, we've certainly created some opportunity here in this site to provide some additional crosswalks and things.
No, I'm just looking for a little bit more curb appeal.
Okay.
Some lighting or something like that, some kind of lighting for. And I basically, most of everybody asked my, my questions.
Okay.
What?
All right. So one, I know, you know, you guys mentioned that this was mixed use. I don't see it as mixed use. I only see one use. I understand in the area maybe, but that being said, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe it is technically still considered mixed use. My, I guess first question is, who'd you reach out to or who'd you speak to at the police department? And who'd you speak to at EMS?
I spoke to, Stan Yastowski. I spoke to the captain and I forgot that.
Who may have just retired.
I didn't speak to the chief. I spoke to a captain there.
Yeah, he's now the chief. He's now the chief.
He's now the chief.
At the police department?
At the police department.
Okay, Captain White?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
Uh, and then I know he's had a lot of concerns about kind of the intersection up ahead there, so he's a good person to talk.
Trying to just traffic issues with me. I said, that's not my bailiwick, so.
Yeah. And then EMS, do you know who you spoke to?
I spoke to the, the chief in charge. I don't have, I think it's in my report. I can't remember.
Don Smith would be the chief.
Yeah.
I kind of heard last second there, no elevators? These are three-story walk-ups?
Yes.
All right, so that will definitely be a burden on EMS. They're carrying patients down three flights of stairs. My other question, how, with your other communities, maybe you have this information, maybe you don't. How often is it people from the community already that are coming into these as opposed to bringing in people from outside the community? Do you have that number? Is that a number?
I, I don't have that as a quantifiable number, so I'm going to answer it anecdotally, which, you know, may not, may not satisfy you. There is some proportion. It's not, it's not the majority. But it's, it probably ends up being in the 10% range, I would say.
That's 10% come from already within the community?
Within the community.
If you had to guess.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead. Um, so my concern a little bit is that number, that number of 17. We're talking about how many potential students might live in this community, but when the single individual recently divorced decides to move in Mon, from Monroe to Monroe and take one of these apartments, that's opening up a house that would then attract a family of school age people. So there is that kind of domino effect that we're not talking about. How common? I mean, you know, I think you have that list of the different coffee cups, what did you say, lifestyle? That, you know, it attracts and empty nesters, again, if they're coming from within town and basically, you know, abandoning or giving up, turning over a house that they've had for years. Kids have moved out. No burden on the school system. All of a sudden, that opens up as a new prime piece of property. So I do have concern because all the other towns you compare it to have these apartments. We, we don't have this yet, so it would be kind of a new thing for the town. So I do think that number might skew a little higher.
May I speak to that for a second?
Yeah, no, please.
Come on. So, I mean, our experience is that, that people who are going to be either suddenly single or empty nester and are going to leave a form of housing, if they decide to leave their single-family house, they're probably going to leave anyways. I can tell you that in, in Trumbull and in Shelton, we have many Monroe residents who've moved out of Monroe and are, and are living in our communities in, in Monroe and, pardon me, in Shelton and Trumbull. So they will find, you know, like water seeking its own level. They'll find a place to live. If it's in town, that's great. That's probably their first choice. But if for some reason their single-family home no longer meets their needs, they'll look farther and wider to find it, in my experience.
Yeah, but in some cases, people stay in this town because they have roots here. They're tied here for some reason. Whether it's children still in the school system, if it's a divorce or like you mentioned, you know, wanting to go to their church, still being a part of their library, whatever it might be depending on the demographic. And so I just think that's something we want to be conscious of. You know, and we do still have to open this up to the public. I don't know if anyone is on that even wants to talk about that or, that's, uh, yeah, I like his idea of sidewalks going down the front. I think that should happen. You have two business areas that are going to attract foot traffic. I mean, you know, walking to Baskin Robbins or Dunkin' Donuts for, you know, ice cream, coffee. I think there's, yeah, there's a taco place. There might be a dog grooming place. You're a dog-friendly place, walking your dog to get groomed instead of having to drive down and around the corner. Seems like it might make sense. I think that was all I had for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let's have Commissioner Smirkinow, and then we'll have a second round.
Not including visitors, is there a max occupancy to each unit? And is that monitored at all?
It is monitored at all. It is. I, I don't have, I can provide those numbers in our next presentation, but it is monitored. We have reports both internally and it is monitored. There are occupancy. We don't want over occupancy here. The wear and tear in our apartments is demonstrably worse when people overoccupy apartments. So we do monitor that very closely. And we've had situations where we have to send what are called notices to quit. Not that many, but we have situations where we, we issue notices to quit and start legal proceedings when there are too many occupants in a unit.
All right, and as, as far as soundproofing between units, do you guys do anything for that? Double up on the 5A sheet rocks, stuff like that?
I'm going to, we, we have a staggered stud construction, but I'd rather give you a, a detail and a more meaningful answer if, if it's a concern at the next hearing.
Yeah, I've, I've heard some complaints about that on your Shelton complex. You can hear through the walls and such like that.
One thing that we do, do do is we have JIP Crete on all floors. So we, we have, we don't have those complaints about people walking. I haven't heard many. And we're sensitive to them because people will move out if they're, if they're really upset, as they should.
I thought I saw in the earlier drawing, there was an additional exit that went to Judd Road. Did I see that?
That was my question too.
Yeah.
At that, in a previous, not this presentation, but a previous presentation, that was one of the alternatives for getting out was to go behind Baskin Robbins to get out to Judd Road.
That was my question.
That's correct. And as part of our traffic study, so, so there is access to the driveway behind Duncan and the-
Duncan.
Gas station on the corner, which actually is good because what that does is allows for that traffic equilibrium and anyone access, anyone who needs to, you know, turn left on 25, I think they'll go out to Judd Road and get to that signal and turn at a, at a green light versus trying to sit here and, and just wait. So I think that's, you know, that's something that we incorporated to our traffic study. We're certainly expecting, you know, that traffic to happen and obviously those, those, those access rights and stuff to make sure that they can provide that maneuvers is part of this, part of the project.
Thank you.
Have those property owners voiced any concern with the traffic going through the back of their property?
No, so, so the, the prop, the owner of the parent property- No, so the owner of the parent property that's being sold to Continental currently owns the gas station and just recently sold the Dunkin' to the business operator, and they're both, you know, obviously, the way the traffic looks like and the pattern, and ultimately, you know, these uses are actually very excited about this because it's gonna bring a whole new, you know,
That was gas station.
A hundred and fifty population to the unit.
If I could answer that, because I've been involved with Sabrina.
Up for the record, name for the record.
Oh, so sorry. Greg Kamidelski. Just recently, with Howard and the Dunkin' Donuts owner-operator and the Shell Station owner-operator, we've been working out, and we have worked out, a, pull it a tri-party maintenance agreement, an access agreement, so all of that will be papered and covered, and there'll be full access rights for the apartment dwellers, Shell Station, Dunkin', and it's papered up on how maintenance will take place and who will pay for it, so that's, that's been covered.
Did you have any other questions?
I'm out this time.
Alright, so we'll go through again.
Do we wanna open it up to the public and so?
No, we're still asking questions.
Let's finish with Commissioner. One more question. The elevator issue, do any of your other properties have elevators? Not only for Ryan's concern, what I'm concerned about, but it really limits not only the people over 60, but also the younger people who have surgeries that can't get up and down the stairs, I would love an elevator added, if that's all possible. I know it's a big ask, but I think you're gonna limit your.
If I can, this is Howard Rappaport again, we have seven communities in Connecticut, five, two of them have elevators, that's in Trumbull and in Shelton, Milford, which is also Feral Coast, does not have elevators, of the 188 units, 63 of them roughly will all be ground floor units, and our experience is that the people who, you know, lack the mobility, with all fairness, to climb the stairs will take those units, and we just, we don't have an ability within this footprint, as currently shown, to add an elevator, it would change the complete orientation of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Minie, do you have?
Yeah, so, so out to Judd Road, I have, I think it's a great idea, but I also have concerns with it. Speeding, obviously, I think there are speed bumps there currently, or no?
I don't think so.
No, there's no speed bumps there?
I don't think so.
I thought there used to be.
I thought there was, I don't know, I would just look into, I would look into, uh, just.
It's the gas, if you drive through the gas station, you got those kind of raised
Yeah, I thought there was a speed bump there, but I guess not.
Might be right, but I, I don't remember.
I don't drive behind it often, just, my concern is just maybe sign, let's just explore signage because of, because there's people walking, and I know people with bigger trucks that wanna go to Dunkin' Donuts or get something at the convenience store, park their truck on the side where the, where the tree line is, I just, you know, I just, just safety is my major concern with.
Certainly look at that and give it a deeper study, provide some recommendations to ensure those issues are addressed.
Yeah, that's just my major, like, I don't mind going through there, I think it's a great idea to avoid, to avoid some of these lights, especially if you're gonna go that way.
Makes a lot of sense.
But just, just maybe figure out a way to do some signage, or anything for safety to go there, was my only thing. Done.
Your impact on the school system? How do you, how do you come up with that number?
What, the number of school-aged children?
Yeah.
Look, similar-type properties, go back. Uh, let's see, what is it, right there. Looked at similar market rate properties that are market rate rental units, okay, also looked at one affordable complex which happened to be in Newtown, I went to all the surrounding towns to try to find properties of similar size, age, and that's where that information comes from. Also, there's published data that I look at, there used to be some reports that were reduced, reproduced them, but they're out of date and don't reflect the current lifestyle changes and what the impact is. One of the things to keep in mind when you're looking at apartments is the rent, okay, the higher the rent, the lower the propensity to have school-aged children, so same thing with single-family homes, if you have single-family homes over certain thresholds, say 500, maybe higher now with the, with the market rates going, say 550, 600,000, they may have a four-bedroom house, but not all four bedrooms are occupied, they may only have two children, they may not have three or four children, so the higher income has an impact on it, as well as the communities that you're living in, and the, if you looked at the information in my report, the net worth and the average and median incomes are much higher than some of the surrounding towns, and therefore, the rent is a little higher, and therefore, that limits the number of school-aged children.
Right, but I'm, Ryan's concern was about people that own houses and look into these apartments, that those houses would rebound since we've shown, but this is done by a yearly basis or something like that.
Well, every, every, I do the analysis, I update the report to get the information.
Right, but is that all calculated with the whole, the whole community, like, you know, that number that you come up with, the school-aged children, is that, that takes into consideration what you're bringing in there and what people that are moving out, so that's all one number, right?
All, the data is directed and focused only on this complex, I didn't look at any outside of the hotel.
No, but I'm saying, I don't, when you come up with that number, like, say you came up with, what was it, 24, whatever it is?
No, 17.
17. You did that by where these other places were put in place, and then, so, when that thing went in there, their average went up, 17 students or 20 students or whatever, right?
I would make the guess.
But that takes in the whole picture, it just doesn't take in that, that one unit that went in there, the number of students went up over that whole year was 17, because that went in there, but that's like if somebody moved in from houses or whatever.
No, no, that's, it says, it says as a point in time, I looked at it as, of the date of the analysis, which January 7th, which referenced back to October 1st, 2021, that's when the data is published by, that's the date that the towns have to submit their data on school-aged children, teachers, and all the information, okay, that's where that data comes from.
Right.
So it doesn't, doesn't take into account if somebody moved from a single-family house, say, empty nester moved in here, and they sold the house and the, one school-aged children goes into that house, that is not considered here, it's only what the impact is due to this project, that's what the zoning requires, that's what your regulation required.
So it doesn't?
Doesn't, it doesn't take into consideration turnover in single-family homes, condos, it doesn't take into consideration that, no, it does not.
I, I, I mean, just, not to interrupt, but I read something that, that two-bedroom, two-bedroom apartments actually don't bring in a lot more, as many kids as you think.
Yeah, they don't.
No, no, I know, I read that.
So I'm just, it's.
I was concerned about his concern about.
No, no, I understand, but you, yeah, but like a person, yeah, but like a person like me, if I had two kids, I couldn't live here because, because there's only two bedrooms.
No.
Two, huh?
Bunk beds.
Bunk beds, yeah, yeah, that would be amazing, that'd be a war and a half, you'd hear them through every building, but, but I read a study that like two-bedroom apartments.
No, I, I, I've done that, I've looked at all.
Yeah, the threshold is three bedrooms, that's where.
Yeah, three bedrooms totally change.
Like jump out of, yeah.
Okay, that's all I had to ask.
No, no other questions at this time. Alright, then let's go to the public.
I think, wait, wait.
Actually, actually, the question's for Mr. Rappaport, I'd like to know if there's any monitoring or controls or restrictions on subleasing these units or on Airbnb rentals?
Yeah, there is an absolute prohibition on that, and that is in the lease, we lose complete control of our community with subleasing, with Airbnb, with any temporary housing, that is monitored very closely and is a, is a big concern of ours, and we enforce against it aggressively.
Are there sprinklers in the buildings?
Yes.
Yes.
Other quick question, it's gated, you said?
Yeah.
How, what's the, what's the entrance situation gonna be for the gates, is there a guard, how are, how is a visitor or a delivery person getting in?
Yeah, there's, there are, so, they come, they, Kevin, I don't know if you can show it a little bit better, blow it up, but there will be a keypad for access, we've used this at other communities, and it, it tends to work, if someone's getting a delivery, Amazon would go right to the clubhouse, they don't come in, but if any other delivery, they have to provide access and they, they buzz them in through the telephone system, and then the gates go up.
Here, there's gate, there's two sets of gates.
Oh, so you could get in and out on both sides?
In and out of the side, yes, and it's full circulation around both doors.
The residents can punch in, and then if somebody else, they like buzz it, like a apartment building.
They buzz in with an easy pass.
Sort of the thing to get through.
Go right in.
No, that's good, I mean, I know law enforcement didn't say anything, but we've had catalytic converters disappearing in town lately, and this seems like a great spot to.
Go shopping?
Yeah.
It's right on, it's right off the main street.
Oh my god.
You know, are there balconies? That's another question.
Yes, every unit has a full-size balcony.
Thank you. I have one for Mary Blackburn, what are we doing with native species on this?
Oh, the conservation committees, yours have hurt.
Sorry Blackburn, for the matter, being that it's a schematic plan, you know, we haven't called out every, every plant, but we did provide a plant list of the proposed trees, many of which are native, we always strive for, I always strive for 8% natives, and a lot of that can be done in the buffer areas where you have like a more naturalistic planting, and then, you know, as you get closer to the building and maybe in some of the parking areas, you might need some species that aren't natives, but the overall majority would be, strive for 8%.
Okay, thank you. Alright, now we're gonna go to the public, are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to comment on this application? Any members of the public online? Ron Benavsky.
Ron, you just have to unmute yourself, you should be able to talk.
How's that?
We hear you.
Okay, I have one really important question here, I think I heard during the rather quickly discussed septic capacity, I think the, somebody, I think it was Kevin, had said that each unit has its own septic system.
Each building?
Each building, correct.
And that makes how many septic units separate, that are separately maintained and separate pumpouts, I assume, 12?
There are nine total septic systems in the property.
The clubhouse has one?
The clubhouse, maintenance building, and poolhouse share one system, it's a, it's called a central system in accordance with DPH requirements, so each.
And.
Should we lose your eyes?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
What was it, did you repeat the question?
Yeah, who monitors them for proper function, and if there is a problem with it, who then maintains them?
So, Continental, the developer is, you know, responsible for the, you know, oversees all of them.
And who, who studied the capacity of this land to properly function with that many units, and how much replacement capacity, like in a residential unit, you have to have 100% bleaching field capacity in the event of a failure, and where does the, that collective effluent for, in that high-density situation there, where does it all eventually wind up, and what watershed would be affected if there were ever flows, overflows?
Sure, so, I'll touch on that, so, the site's been exhaustively studied by Jake Keeler and then engineers from my own office and myself, with additional testing and oversight from the Monroe Sanitarium and Matt Pollak from the Department of Public Health, each system is designed for a full 100% reserve area for each of the nine systems that are proposed on the property, the site is located outside of the public water supply watershed, we are just to the east of the watershed, and actually, you know, according with Crane, and I think you have, okay, you have some comments from them, they had some questions regarding the overall watershed and where we were related to that, we are outside, there's a, there's a ridge just our west, so we are contained and all of our stuff drains towards the east and then the south, so, each system is designed, you know, in full compliance with the Department of Public Health requirements, the state's septic requirements, and does have a full 100% reserve area.
And do these, are these engineered systems that have to be inspected by the state, or are they, is it the town's responsibility just to maintain them through the health department?
These, each system is, it's, it's a system that'd be registered with the Department of Public Health.
Monroe or state?
State Department of Public Health.
I, I, I've been living in town here for 50 years, and I live right downhill, downgrade from High Meadows on between 111 and Old Zor Road, if you're familiar with that, it currently has overflowed and is under redesign because they compromised 100%, or they built units, too many units, and compromised their reserve capacity, and in a past review of some past developments, these high-density living situations, just about everyone in town has failed at some point in its history, there's another one on 111 right now, the shopping center, they're digging up the parking lot again, I assume the only reason they would be doing that is because of some kind of a septic or water, wastewater issue.
Or Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, across the street from Dunkin' Donuts, this is a prevalent problem in this town, and somebody's gotta face it, the state does a terrible job of monitoring these, and by the time they even know about a problem, it's already a problem for the neighborhoods, and it's not fun to live in a neighborhood where there is a problem like that, I would suggest we have some professionals, independent of the town and separate from the state, look at these things and figure out what's going on, and why have all of these units failed so frequently in the town, and it is a serious problem, you just can't say the state looked at it or it meets their requirements, the town is, you look at this, this situation, it looks like too much on too little land, and the only thing you gotta get, and it looks to me like, oh, the surface water, it just drains off the top into the aquatic and would overload that wetlands in the front there, and it's probably there to catch a lot of water, and the other question I ask, where does the snow load go when you're, when you're plowing these units in the winter, that's high density, you can't, you're not gonna move there unless you get rid of the snow first, and there's not, doesn't seem to be any place to push it, but the septic's issue is serious, I would recommend that this be looked at by somebody other than whoever usually looks at them and approves them, because they're doing a terrible job over time in the long-term sustainability of them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Benavsky, did you wanna mention the snow removal?
Yeah, so we can certainly show, you know, we do, we did incorporate, you know, areas for snow storage, we can certainly identify that and provide, you know, the cremation weight, something we obviously thought about, so we wanna make sure there's adequate room for that, we can demonstrate that, just to touch on some of those other units, you know, part of the challenge with some of those is, those are for-sale developments, and with those types of developments, there, you're now, you're now relying on multiple individual unit owners to contribute to an association who is then responsible for inspection and maintenance and things like that, and unfortunately, a lot of times, communities like that.
Don't raise enough money.
Don't do that, and I think there's a little bit different that sets this apart, is because since this is, this is, you know, there's, there's a, there's a common denominator is, this is, you know, there's a, there's a common denominator across all this that has additional maintenance and inspection observations and because it's a rental product, it is imperative that they maintain, inspect and ensure that this functions adequately because if not, they won't have any residents. So I think it's a little bit different in that sense, but we certainly understand and appreciate the concern.
Are there any other members of the public online that have any other questions or comments on this application? Please raise your hand. Let me see. You can't see. They have an emoji. Mr. Benavsky has his hand up.
I'll put my hand down.
There's a button.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, we'll go back to.
Yeah.
Yeah. She can raise her hand.
Yeah, so just.
Oh, we're doing that up again. Sorry.
No, it's, thank you.
Explaining emojis to.
You may need more time. So just to, just to kind of summarize, so we greatly appreciate the commission's consideration with this. I think we've had some really good discussions tonight and I have a list of things that we want to kind of, we'll come back to the commission for the next meeting. Look at the, to address the parking and maybe identify some surplus parking, you know, I think we can incorporate sidewalks along Route 25, talk about occupancy per unit. We can, in additional details for some of the newest attenuation between units, we can provide that information to the commission. We can provide some information on the lighting so you guys can get a better handle on how that looks. We'll take a closer look at the Judd Road access and, you know, some recommendations on how we can address that and then obviously some of the snow storage areas. I think, you know, we can certainly provide this for the commission's consideration as part of this special development district adoption. And I'll say that, as I, as I pointed out before, this is kind of the next thing we are seeing. So if the commission approves this amendment as you see before you, it allows us to bring that next application which has even more details to it. But I think to help with this decision, we'll certainly address the items I just mentioned that we discussed tonight, provide that for your next hearing and hopefully we can continue the discussion at the next meeting.
Thank you. Then we will continue this meeting until our next meeting, which I believe is April 7th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do have our earlier presentation that I believe we can deliberate on, on the accepting the new map.
Oh, the text on it?
Map amendment.
Map.
Oh. Is there any discussion on the map at this point?
No.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I've provided a copy of the resolution for all the members. They can please refer to it and then I'll start reading it.
Okay, this is draft resolution on the zoning map. Go ahead.
Okay, regarding zoning boundary change approval, ZCA 2022-01, file 1021D, as in David. Whereas the commission has initiated the zone boundary change proposal by delineating the Main Street Design District overlay zone to the zoning map as authorized by the adoption of the MDD text amendment, which was effective on August 13th, 2021. Said MDD delineation is shown on map titled "Propose Location of MDD Overlay" dated 2/24/2022. You all have a copy of that and we have the exhibit here for the audience. Whereas the commission, in accordance with the creation of the Main Street Design District, has initiated the zone boundary change delineation of said MDD to the zoning map as a newly adopted overlay district and whereas a copy of the proposed zoning change was duly filed with the Monroe Town Clerk. And whereas the commission has determined that the MDD will guide responsible development for the Route 25, 11 and 111 corridors in a way that will provide for compatible economic development, enhance the overall character of the town while controlling traffic access along these corridors. Whereas notice of the below-noted public hearing was public twice in the voices pursuant to Connecticut State Statute 8-7D and 9.24 of the Monroe Zoning Regulation, Commission has considered the proposed zone boundary change as a duly noticed public hearing opened and closed on March 7th, 2022, at which time interested persons were afforded an opportunity to be heard. Whereas written notice of the public hearing was sent to abutting property owners, whereas the application was deferred to the Conservation of Water Resources Commission. Now that's, yeah, that one is off. Now therefore be it resolved consistent with Connecticut General Statute 8-3 and the Monroe Zoning Regulation Commission at a regular meeting of March 17th approves said zoning boundary changes as proposed. Be it further resolved, the commission notes the following, the zoning action will not change or diminish any parcel street fundage, lot access or other existing lot condition. The zoning action will not adversely impact neighborhood properties, neighboring properties. The zoning act, action is consistent with the POCD promoting a wider selection of economic development while preserving and enhancing the character of the town and the change in zoning is a positive change to the benefit of the property and strong neighborhood. And the commission hereby authorizes the publication of the notice of decision consistent with State Statute 8-3D and the effective date shall be Friday, March 25th, 2022. We need a motion and a second, Mr. Chairman, and roll call vote.
Chairman, we'll left hand a motion to accept the map.
Okay, I'll do it.
You looked like you were about.
Yeah, whatever. I make a motion to accept ZCA 2022-01, filed number 1021D, as drafted.
Have motion, I need a second.
A second?
Motion and a second.
What?
Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
That will call the rolls, starting on my left.
Lupo, yes.
Mayini, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Condon, yes.
Motion passes.
Have I eaten lunch?
I brought some soda breads.
We have minutes.
Oh, you got that.
Oh, yeah.
Holiday. Oh, I know.
All right, so we have minutes before us, we're going to look at the March 10th minutes.
I have a question about the March 10th minutes.
Go ahead.
It says, "Call the order pledge allegiance," it says Chairman Mayini, but all the other spots has Chairman O'Reilly. I don't know if I ran that, did I run that?
We need, you're acting chairman, we need to correct that, so make that noted.
Okay.
It's corrections.
Okay, so with the corrections, Chair left hand a motion to accept the special meeting minutes on March 10th.
I make a motion to accept the March 10th.
No, it's not March 10th.
March 10th.
No, I was here March 10th.
February 3rd and February 17th.
Something about February 3rd.
Why don't, that's when you, in the island.
Yeah, February 3rd.
So are we doing February 3rd?
Talking about.
For March 10th, we need to remove.
I was talking as chair. Yeah, Bruno wasn't a chair.
Yeah.
March 10th?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm on the March 10th one, right here.
Oh, yes, okay.
Yeah, that was to submit it for you tonight to review, that's what we'll correct. So tonight is the 3rd and the 17th.
All right, so Chair left hand a motion then at this point with the correction for March 10th.
I'm so confused, but let's, let's go.
Motion for March 10th?
Motion for March 10th with corrections for the meeting minutes.
Motion, I need a second.
Second.
Motion and a second for March 10th. Call the roll. Starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Mayini, yes.
Lupo, yes.
Motion passes.
Where we started, it's getting very.
I'm getting confused.
Keep you awake. Zoning and planning matters, we have update on the LEP consultation, consultant selection for 64 Cambridge Drive. So before you, you should have the March 14th dated.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, all the members have the latest revised. We have Rob McCarthy here tonight.
So we have the changes that we wanted incorporated. We wanted notification of meetings, we wanted the water quality monitoring quarterly oversight to be done, we wanted the unannounced visits, we wanted the oversight the entire duration.
And clarification on the wetlands permit.
Want to report monthly, one year.
Is Rob going to speak?
Rob's here.
All right, can I, can I just have a bathroom break before Rob speaks then?
Yeah.
Let's take a bathroom break. I'm sorry. Yeah, I gotta take one. I'm a child, I apologize, I'm a child.
All right, take the five-minute.
Real quick, five minutes.
Meeting of the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission, regular meeting, it's 9:31, we're back in session. We left off after a review of the changes to the NSafe contract. So I hope everyone read it, what's on the break. Are there any questions on the NSafe contract? I believe all we wanted to be added has been added, is that correct?
Yeah, I clarified that as the commission knows, the zoning is a two-year permit. So you will determine whether or not to have two full years of monitoring, that's your call. We will rediscuss that October, November, because that goes into the next year, we get a new contract.
My, my question is, I have to ask that question, I don't want to get lost on it. So we're not, this is being done through wetlands, right?
That is correct.
Five-year contract.
If the commission supports this, you're going to make a recommendation to the inland wetlands to proceed by delivering it to the town council.
But their approval's for five years.
Their permit is for five years, the restoration period is for the life of it, within that five years. The restoration, the owner hopes they can get it done in a year or year and a half. I, you know, but it's good for, their permit's good for five years.
The restoration is the wetlands.
Yeah.
Or the wetlands, not for the.
No one knows the lifespan on that.
No, I have that, so this.
But their permit is good for.
These are in place for five years.
Their permit is good for five years, so they can keep doing it.
But our, I mean, our fill permit is good for two years.
That's right.
But this, we can piggyback on this for five years.
That's correct.
Is what you're saying.
One year at a time.
One year at a time, though.
Every, every year before November, both land use boards will be reviewing whether to proceed again for the next calendar year or to terminate it.
Okay, but what I'm saying is that our conditions will last for five years.
That's correct.
For them to be that way, right? Because then they have to, they have to approve this, us.
And as you know, when they come back for an extension for you, you can either have a public hearing or handle it administratively.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I'm pretty sure though, for our approval, we required the LEP and LEP for duration. So in a year, we're not determining if we're still having them monitoring it, we're determining if these guys are still monitoring or if it's a different LEP.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So no matter what.
We're good for, we're now, two years, we can't require another LEP.
We can.
Yes. No, you raised a good point. When the applicant comes in for a renewal, an extension, you can.
In two years, I can require one within two years, but for now, we can't require.
This contract's only good till the end of the year. When this is up, we could, not that we're going to, but we could say, we don't like what you're doing, we want to go out and try to get a different LEP, correct?
Yeah, or you go.
One-year contract.
We want to continue monitoring it for the next calendar.
As is, we'd like you to continue, yeah.
So it's the commission's call.
No, I don't, I don't think that's right, right? Because I, I want you to clarify this to me. We can't require another LEP for two years, no? For us to get one.
Oh, an extra.
Yeah.
Correct.
For us to have our own.
Right.
We have to still piggyback off the wetlands.
That's correct. So that's why you got to coordinate with them.
No, I have that, but I'm saying within two years, we can change the whole deal because they have to come back.
You know the monthly inspections with the LEP?
Not an extra.
We have to share.
You could change.
No, I'm saying, I'm just saying that we.
Got you.
Right. You hear that? When we do the monthly LEP joint inspections, both wetlands and zoning have to share what the findings are. Because by October, November of this year, you want to have a handle on what you want to do for the next calendar year.
Okay, and then if a problem occurs, what happens?
Stop it.
Down? We shut it down.
Yeah, that's in your condition of approval.
And so they were talking tonight about the pumping of the water.
Right.
So we have a cease and desist on that property, right?
But they also have permission from deep to do that.
But no, but our cease and desist.
Is.
And inland wetlands has a cease and desist.
Yeah.
All projects should be at a, at a standstill until this stuff was approved.
They receive permission from deep on the.
But deep, but how does deep give them permission?
Because that's regulated Leon by the state of Connecticut.
What's regulated?
The pumping. The pumping.
Oh, groundwater?
Yes.
I understand that, but there's not supposed to be any activity on that property until they get an approval, no?
No, the state is aware that the land use boards took action to approve it and they granted them permission.
But just.
Kevin Solley, Kevin Solley was supposed to hand, hand me the approvals, which he had and he left before.
No, I understand that he get approval from the state to pump.
That, because that is happening right now.
I got all that, stormwater, I have that.
That is happening right now.
I understand that, but that's during a project, they, they give an approval no matter what. They say, okay, you come pump this month volume of water. But that doesn't mean that because they got that approval, they could just start pumping groundwater whenever they want, because anybody would do that.
Well, the state is aware of this project, Leon.
No, but I'm saying, are they supposed to be pumping groundwater at this time or not?
Leon is saying because.
Yeah, Connecticut is saying they can do it now.
What Leon is saying is because there's a cease and desist, are they allowed to?
That's not applicable in this instance.
Okay.
Through the eyes of the state.
The state trumps our cease and desist.
Because they regulate it.
All right, are there any other questions on this?
And I, and I need to get those documents and I'm going to email those to all the.
Makes sense, though.
It does.
If they're going to regulate it.
And they don't have that and they are in violation of this.
Oh, that's a different story.
Very different conversation.
We need to have that in our file.
Any other questions on the proposal?
Rob, you still there?
Yes, I am.
Page two, I thought we were just going to update, just a reminder, under task three, approximately three days per week for a period of two months, we're going to just change the, the duration of the project.
Yes, entire duration.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you get that, Rob?
Yes.
Task three, it's duration of project.
Okay. Yeah, I, and there's other timeframes in here now that I added a task four, so that does carry this through to the end of the year. Yes, that all the months essentially are covered, you know, so it's just a matter of which phases they're actually in on any given month, so.
Oh, yeah, so if you hop over to page three, it kind of covers it under task four.
I also spoke to the applicant about, you know, remember I recommended winter shutdown? There will be minimal activity if it's a real winter with sub-freezing temperatures, but they, they would still like the ability to bring it in and they will monitor that with the town and the consultant. We need oversight.
Monitor.
It's just that it's difficult when it's very cold like that.
In the winter, as long as we have an LP monitoring.
Yeah.
No, it's, no.
Yeah.
No.
He's not monitoring the water pumping in the winter, but the rest of the filling stuff he.
It's the zoning, that's correct.
Oh, it's zoning, not the LEP.
No, but we'll, no, we'll coordinate that with the LEP, too.
Well, so you're both going to do it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, and as part of task four, there's enough time in there to, to get it through to December and so, you know, as we, as you've discussed, in October, November, we'll talk about, you know, next year.
It's just the water pumping that is not happening during, they said they're going to be dumping.
They have to shut down the, the, the water, right?
So, so they're going to, so you're going to get, I don't know how they're going to move all that water.
The.
A lot of water.
They've been doing it for, when did they get that deep approval?
When they bring in material.
It rained today, too. It rained today, too.
You're going to get paperwork from them, you're going to review that paperwork?
Yes, we'll obtain the paperwork that they're, you know, that they're receiving in, in order to, you know, offer their approvals for the material to come on site and we'll look at that, yes.
I have a strange question, but, but were you there day one when, when they started the pumping?
No, the day we were out there, everything was frozen.
But we didn't hire him yet, so he didn't have to be there day one?
That's why we want to get this going.
Where does it say, in the updated document, that they're going to be unannounced visits? I know we had talked about that.
I, I didn't specifically call them unannounced visits, there's just going to be the visits that are not the ones that are coordinated with myself and commission members that want to attend once a month, that's clarified that we'll do that. On the other visits, you know, that are figured in here, they're not, they're not spelled out as unannounced, but I mean, that's our intent, is that they would be unannounced, that we could go.
Nicole, we've got both hands going there.
Well, I'm just looking because I'm just questioning how the cost of task three went down from seventeen thousand to twelve thousand.
I think I, that's, I think I reduced it from three days a week to two days a week. It was really the significant change there. And with the overlap with some of the other visits, I, you know, drop down the number of hours, we assume that they might be on site, it would just be a couple hours on site rather than, rather than a few hours.
There'll be less oversight then.
A little bit less, you know, but, you know, working with the cap that we have and trying to get task four to fit with the additional months, had to, you know, kind of squeeze in a couple spots to, to make it fit, but we'll still make, you know, as many visits as we possibly can to, to fit in here, so.
So same oversight spread over more months?
Correct.
Or less oversight?
Well, technically, it is less.
So Rick, so what happens for some reason that they start bringing a lot more material or something like that, and they need to come out there more often? How do they get paid for that? They don't, so they don't come.
No, and, and that, that is a, an issue, but it is anticipated that there's a low inventory of clean fill in the state of Connecticut, as of right now. There are not large-scale projects that are going on. That is, that is what's been told to staff.
Well, there's not large-scale projects current.
Currently.
That's, but this is also still the winter, so spring, summer, there could, there could be, I guess, right?
Yeah.
We don't know.
It takes, it takes a while, though.
Well, to get them off the ground, sure.
There's a large development in Beacon Falls Waterbury for Amazon.
Oh, yeah?
So, and we were told that's too far, so, you know, and that's right on Route eight eighty-four. Because they're trying, they're trying to keep the commute distance short.
So for all the.
Not a lot.
So that, for all the material that comes in, into that site, are we going to end up with all the documents?
Absolutely.
All right, so we're going to get what comes in and brought to this.
Absolutely, and we'll, we'll be reporting to the commission monthly, as well as to wetlands. There's, there's a need for that transparency, especially in the very beginning.
Right, I just want to make sure that we have the documents, because sometimes they say that, like, a couple meetings, they say they didn't have documents, and then all of a sudden, they get that documents, you know?
I, I, I totally understand where Leon's coming from, but the only thing I could say is, unfortunately, we have to have a trust factor.
Yeah.
With, with all parties, right? Like, at the end of the day, no, we do. No, I'm just saying, like, we could ask the same questions over and over and over and over, but we have, there has to be a trust level between everyone, right? There, it just, otherwise, it's never going to get off the ground, it's never going to get done. And as soon as one of these spot checks finds something. Then that's a different story. Add. Then, well, that's a. It's, it's, that trust is gone. Correct. They've ruined it, and, and we're, and this is a completely new. At the end of the day, we have to trust them for now, right? Like, we have to say, hey, you're going to do by that, and if, if something's found, then, you know? Have to, we have to lay the law down. We got to get Chapman back on the road, you know what I'm saying?
Right, and the summary does say, too, that the scope and frequency of visits will be reviewed upon completion of each task, so we'll have an opportunity to review that before it gets to.
So, Mr. Chairman.
So let's pass this on then to the.
Yeah, I, I would suggest you do a motion in a second that says to forward the statement, the scope of services dated March fourteenth twenty-two, with the noted revisions.
March.
March fourteen.
What does it say?
It's dated March fourteen.
Seventeen.
It's fourteen.
It's dated March fourteen. I know, but there were a couple, couple things we had to add to it, right?
We had to add a couple things.
With the noted revisions.
Okay.
Back to the inland wetlands commission for final review and submission to town council.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion?
That's a long one.
That's a long motion.
Let me try this.
I'll make a motion to, oh, you want to do.
Let her do, let her do, let her do, yeah.
No, no, I don't, you do better than me.
Forward the scope of services.
Service to the town.
Dated seventeenth.
You say it? I think we just did it.
No, the document is dated fourteenth.
Somebody's so moved. I count, motion made.
All right, and we have a motion, we need a second.
Second.
Motion on a second. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
If not, we'll call the wall, sign on my left.
Lupo, yes?
Rainey, yes. O'Reilly, yes?
And Rosie, yes?
Condon, yes? Motion passes, we will move this to the town hall.
Thank you, Rob.
Pencil.
Okay, thank you, look forward to working with you.
Made on affordable housing plan.
Okay, as reported at the last meeting, we're going to be holding a workshop in April. We, we know three official sites now, Mitchus, which is ten percent, elderly housing, five twenty-five, and if the commission is so inclined to act favorable on this one, you have ten percent, nineteen more units. This is pretty significant. You know, considering we only have one point nine percent.
I know, but my, my question is, when you're, so you add ten per, say, say this project, you're, you're bringing in nineteen more.
Affordable.
More affordables, but you're also adding a hundred and.
Yeah.
So how, like, how does that, does that number really move?
It's a tiny bit.
Is that like a point oh oh one?
Everyone in this room.
It shows, no, it shows, no, well, it shows effort, right? It shows effort, it shows. Oh, no, 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 I, I, I get that, but I'm just saying, like, that.
You know, it's your major city.
Well, I'm just saying that, that ten percent coming in with a hundred and eighty-eight units, like, is that, is that one point nine, a two, or is it a one point nine oh one? You know what I mean?
And, you know, this commission is ahead of the curve, Joe and I, we watched the Southbury, and they are talking about converting parts of churches.
What? In Southbury?
Yeah, they are not focusing the way they should be, and it's just, it's, it's going to be a long road for some suburban.
Never mind, I guess, that's off topic. They're using Southbury training school and trying to convert some of that.
No.
Okay, that completes that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, Chair?
We have, we have Joe's report.
Oh, let's go.
Go ahead, Joe.
I'll be brief.
All right, Joe.
Ten Victoria Drive, the, as we all know, the garden house is in, they are in process of constructing a ten thousand square foot building up there.
I saw that.
As of the fifteenth, the roof trusses are about twenty-five percent installed. Just so that everybody's clear on this, there's no interior floor applied for or permitted by the building department, so the building will not receive a certificate of occupancy from the building department.
Are they going to put a floor in it?
No.
At the moment, no, they're going to use it for storage. So as far as storage goes, the.
I, I just have a question. I feel like every step, they're like, yeah, like, it's starting to get a little bit.
Which one is this?
The, Amazon. Now they don't want to put a floor in it, before they didn't want to do this, before they want.
Supposed to be a bathroom in there, it was supposed to be.
Oh, it's hooked up to the septic. Hooked up to the septic.
No, there was supposed to be an office in there, and we, that's what the agreement was on, that's what was going to happen there.
Why do I not feel comfortable?
And so why are they operating there if they're not going to comply with what this commission wanted?
I will invite them back, they said their model changed.
Listen, that's not what we approved.
I still don't even know how they have trucks there.
Leon, you have a ten thousand square foot building, right? Which they comply.
I have all that, I have.
You're talking about the occupancy, do you want them to come back and explain why they don't want to occupy it except?
I understand why they don't want to occupy it, because they said they didn't want to.
They don't need it.
For approval for this commission, they bought their, when it came in with this commission, and they showed us this ten thousand square foot building, was going to have offices in there, was going to have this, was going to have that, it was a nice building, now you're just throwing up a steel building for storage, that's not what this commission approved.
Yeah, so.
It's, just to clarify that, it's not a steel building, it's wood frame.
But I'm saying, I'm saying to you is, that's not what we approved. We approved, basically, there was going to be.
Yeah.
For offices, I mean, I'm just telling you the way it went, when they bought it in front of us, this is what they said they were going to do, then they came back and they said they didn't want to put a building up, then they wanted to put up a twenty-five hundred square foot building, and we said no. And we said we wanted the ten thousand square foot building up, and it was supposed to be what we had drawings of and pictures of and everything, it was supposed to be that.
I understand that, and, Mr. Chairman, now's the time to direct staff through a consensus on whether or not they should come back, do you want to hear any more from them? Because Leon's right.
What was the purpose of requiring that building?
Their initial was a potential office, and then their.
A break room, a bathroom, like, they're supposed to do all that stuff.
And then it changed, they came in to eliminate it, you said no.
Why did we want them to continue with that? For tax purposes?
Yeah, that was part of the overall master plan.
Right.
Two buildings.
And what's happening now is how does taxes go?
No, the taxes will be the same minus office equipment.
Office equipment and the interior, the building's worth more money if you have, if it's built out, right?
I don't.
Not just that.
The tax implication is if they don't have a CO on the building.
Right.
Right, do they pay taxes on it?
No, you'll pay taxes on any building that's in excess of X number of square feet, there's tax revenue coming from that building.
There is.
But I don't, but Rick, what I don't understand is.
I'm not even so concerned about that part, I just feel like every, every, every turn of, every time we turn around, it's always something.
It's not something that we, we, we approve.
Yeah, so, like I said, if you want them back, they modify their plan.
Well, this impact, like, you know, let's say they leave in two, three years, trying to find someone else to go in there without a floor, without.
Well, that's, that could be.
That building's nothing, it's just a, yeah, they're going to, if someone's going in there, it's a giant, they'd almost rather have it with no floors.
Nicole, it's the annoyance factor, like Leon said, the whole evolution, but you have a building there now, it's going to be fairly attractive, you know, it's a stick built, they're going to have, you know, masonry on the skirt. It's just that their, their, their model changed and they don't need to occupy it.
So if we don't give them a CO, then what?
No, we, we give them a zoning certificate. Because it's a building, and it's got to comply with setbacks and the site plan.
That's good, I could, zoning can do that, but they're not going to get either a certificate of occupancy or a certificate of completion of the building.
Right, so if they don't get a certif, oh, just a building, but they could still bring their cars and the trucks and all that kind of stuff?
Well, there's no overhead doors, it's, it's just for storage.
No, you're talking about the rest of the building.
Right, don't they have a temporary CO now?
No.
Oh, no, they, they have a, they have an occupancy for, to use.
The parking lot.
The parking lot.
That's not, that's not going to go away.
No.
So we're just basically talking.
Did we give them the occupancy?
Absolutely, they had, we had to give them an occupancy before they could start using this.
No, 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 who gave them the occupancy to bring the vans on there?
Oh, the building department did.
How could they do that?
Because they completed that portion of the site plan.
Yeah, but they, the building department has nothing to do with parking lot. Building department has nothing to do with a parking lot.
Let me, let me retract what it is.
The building department.
The zoning department issued that.
So how did they do that?
Because they complied with the site plan, Leon.
They didn't come in front of us.
Yes.
No.
No, Leon.
The building.
No, they don't have to come in front of you for the, for zoning certificate, that's handled administratively, we talked about that, Leon, you may have.
The certificate when they weren't complete.
Yeah, we do that all the time when it's phased, this is a phased project.
Like, if you think of like Stevenson lumber and everything that's going down there.
So, Mr. Chairman, do you want them back to determine if, if you want a modified site plan?
I mean, they're going to come back, they're going to say, we're, we're not, we don't want this building, we didn't want it this big, you forced us to do it this big, we wanted to change it, you didn't let us change it, they're not going to, they're not going to do anything, and then we're going to say no, and then they're going to go, okay, and they're going to still park there.
But the thing is, is that what happens here is that we approve something, we approved the building that was supposed to be there, we approved them for parking, we, we accommodated for that, we, we did it, we did the whole thing, and then all of a sudden, it comes in and it changes, and then all of a sudden, it changes that we don't want to put a building in, and then all of a sudden, we said, well, you know what, then you're not going to get an approval, because we had me, Rob, and Bruno, we're not going to approve it, so they weren't going to get an approval, and they said, okay, forget it, we're going to take that off the plate and we're going to put the building up. Now we go and put a building up, and you know what it does? It doesn't sit right with me, being on this commission.
I agree.
That what you do is, and then change, and then they're over there parking their vehicles already over there, that they didn't even get the building up, because we were concerned that may ever, never get up, and then they're parking there, and they didn't even come in front of us to ask us if they can park there temporarily, and then Rick says that he can just hand it out, I don't think that's the way it goes.
No, Leon, that's.
I don't think that's the way it goes in zoning.
Leon, that's incorrect, you approve a site plan, the staff decides if it's ready for the final zoning.
Building wasn't up, right? Isn't it, isn't it?
Leon, that was phase one.
I understand that, there's no, there was.
Rick, it's not all one, it's not all one project?
It's all one project.
But it's phased.
We didn't.
I'm just asking, because I'm just, just to be clear. So that's, that was not all one project? Or was it?
When we usually. One site plan.
Okay.
And they phased from the occupancy part.
Well, perfect example, okay? We had Panera Bread, okay? They came in front of us to ask if they can start doing work on grading it and doing what they have to do, and we gave them permission to do that before they came in with completing their plans and everything like that. We gave them permission to do that. I don't ever, ever remember us giving them permission that they could park the vehicles while they were still doing the construction work on the 10,000 square foot building. I never seen that.
Yeah.
Never came there.
And, Mr. Chairman, please direct staff to bring them in.
You would just explain that part, that it is a phased.
No, he didn't, he's still, he's upset with the fact that they took it upon themselves to do that.
With the phasing.
I think.
NBC. We approved the Noble Gas Station, Panera Bread. We approved that massive development.
No, we did not.
Noble, yes, we did. We approved.
Noble Gas was a separate. Noble Gas, and then they totally separate.
No, they gave us a whole plan where we saw Noble Gas. We saw a gas station, we saw a separate piece of property.
Mr. Chairman, let's bring them. Leon's right, let's bring them, let's get them on the record, all right?
To have them back in again.
I think it's a waste of time.
I think it's, I don't know what we'll get out of it, but my concern, I agree with Leon, is that we're setting a precedence for other people to come into town and tell us they're going to do one thing and then change it, and then we're going to have a strip of parking lots of 25, which is not what we're looking for in our town.
They're going to come in front of us and nothing's going to change.
No, I understand, I just think going forward, we need to be more attentive to these sorts of details because my concern now is someone saw them do this, and they're going to go, oh, well, just tell Monroe we're going to build this great thing, but all we really want is the parking lot. And Amazon did it, so we can do it. And I just think we need to be.
Well, it wasn't a great thing. The building was a very small portion of the property. We knew we were approving a parking lot, we pretend we didn't.
25.
Well, like I said, at the end of the, at the end of, at the end of the day,
they came before us with an entire plan.
Right.
So you want to say, oh, if it was just a parking lot we're approving, then why did they put the building on the original, on the original plan?
Because they figured that this commission.
So it's not just a parking lot, get over it. It's not just a parking lot.
Right.
It's all one project with a building and a parking lot. Because if they wanted not to have the building, they knew they were not going to get an approval.
No, right.
Right.
So I just, I just don't know, like, if they come in front of us, what does it?
Well, see, they ask you for an explanation.
And then say what? And if we don't agree with it, then say what?
What I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, and then like Mike's, it's not going to go anywhere. What I'm saying is, if we never allow them to get on that piece of property to park their vehicles, okay? All right? Then they would have to comply to what we want them to comply to. And that's exactly what would happen, okay? Now, they're already parking on there, because I don't know how they got all that, but they're already.
Zoning was issued, Leon.
I understand that. But now we have no building, or we have a building that's not going to meet what we all thought we were going to get, and that should have never happened. The way I look at it, never happened.
So I think it was before, I think it was before you got here, Rick. NBC wanted to, they took that big.
Yeah, the big building.
That big building. But they wanted to use it, and there were conditions that they couldn't get done. I could be wrong, but because of the winter or something? And they came before us and they were like, hey, we want to start using it, but can. Right, but we can't get it done, and we're going to, and we're going to. And we're going to give them. Want this deadline in the spring or summer or something. I mean, I don't remember the exact specifics of it. But I do remember they came in front of us and they were like, hey, we want to start using the building, we are going to have it done by X day. Can we start? And then as a commission, we were like, yeah, as long as it's done by that day. And if it's not done by that day, you.
But what happened was, but no, but what happened was, and what I was told, and I think it was told in this commission, that Amazon wasn't going to put their vehicles on that property until everything was complete. I think that came from you. And now, things are on the property and it's not complete. And I know that was said in the meeting.
You're absolutely right, that was what was conveyed to me.
Right, and that's what was said in the meeting. That Amazon was not coming, they're going to put one vehicle on that property until the property was complete, and then they were going to put.
So let's get, let's get them in and clarify the air.
You, Mike, I just have one more question. If they come in here and they give us whatever they give us, whatever they say they say, can we put a cease and desist on that and they not use that property whatsoever?
That would be very difficult.
So then, we have them here for what then?
No, you want to clear the air, get it on the minutes.
I mean, do you, or don't you, we're asking.
So on the minutes, we're going to yell at them, and they're going to.
And they're going to do nothing.
On the minutes, I mean, on the minutes, I'm going to ask them, I'm going to ask them, basically, didn't we agree that we were going to have this building complete, was going to have office spaces in it? I understand you may not want to use it. And don't get me wrong, it's not that the building is, what we don't understand here is that Amazon is renting the property. So it's they're renting the property. The developer is the one that doesn't want to put the building in because Amazon doesn't want it.
Right.
It is exactly what it is. So it has nothing to do with Amazon.
Developer.
It's, well, it's a waste of money for him to put more money into the building because he's going to cut down his profit, which I got all that. But on the other hand, is we required this building to be there.
Can we have that? I say yes to have him in front of us. I say yes.
All right, so he'll be here.
Yeah, I like to put it on the record that I don't, I guess.
Three to two. We will.
Okay.
Okay, Joe, you want to?
You're a no.
I hope I didn't even get to.
You're a no. You were just a no.
Hey, Joe.
No, I had to be just.
You were just a no. So three to two, Ryan's a no.
I really.
How do you feel on it?
Bring him in, bring him in. Make him accountable.
I thought this was going to be quick.
I should bring him in.
No, I had to, we got to clear the notes.
Could have cleared it next meeting.
Bill stopped taking notes, he's done.
401 Monroe Turnpike, the septic system is under repair, I'm sure everybody's noticed, and the new Duncan Building. Apparently, they're expecting it to take less than five months, so we'll see if that sticks. 4 Easton Road, that's at the intersection there, they put a new roof on. They're in conversation with the builder department because they haven't, they did some work out there without permits, so they're apparently discussing structural changes need to be made, kind of been done without permits, so they're working on that for a moment. We got two gorillas in the room, and one was at 485 Pepper Street?
Yep.
Okay, so I will read this to you. "The property operator Grasso has filled the lower rear of the site, which is on the east side, below the as yet, the approved as yet unbuilt building by building a driveway ramp, which is on the north end, and creating a substantial parking area in the lower section. There are no applications submitted to any departments or permits issued for this. Here is equipment and materials stored and vehicles parked down there in that parking area. The wetlands and the upperland review area has been stripped, filled, and raised the grade by roughly three to five feet on top of Millings. The upper level of the site is being used for storage, import, processing, and the export of material that has nothing to do with the Pepper Street reconstruction project. It's obvious by walking around on the site that what's going on out there has got nothing to do with Pepper Street."
What's that, 485 Pepper?
That's Grasso's.
That's Grasso's.
That's their main office.
Is that going to be the recycling?
Yes, what was supposed to be the recycling.
None of that's in there.
No, they're building a nice wall so you can't see what.
No, there's nothing in it.
Pepper Street.
They have a cease and desist. They have a cease and desist.
We got to, we got to issue another one. I talked to solely engineering because they're the project engineer. And we're meeting them next Monday. Because they have to go to wetlands and zoning, and they have to stop.
Because they've been out there, every day I drive by, they're out there working.
I don't know, I don't know what they're going to do with that. They have, wetlands, they have a disaster.
It's like a roller coaster.
Yeah.
Okay, they ignored it.
We have to do a new one.
We haven't, I understand it. We haven't fined them at all, right? We haven't done anything. So they're going to keep on going on until we do something. So we need to do something.
What is the next step, then? Not just another.
We're meeting.
And that's, this is not going to work.
We're meeting with the property owner and their project engineer. They have to go to wetlands and zoning to deal with the infraction. There was major work that was done.
Did we issue the cease and desist?
Yeah.
How long ago was that?
Well, that was an earlier one, and it's more involved now, Mike.
That one's stale at this point.
It's more involved now, there's other activity, upland review area.
If we don't do anything, then it's going to get more and more involved. I mean, it's our error.
We need to start fining them.
Awesome.
Yep, right, why are we not fining them?
I agree, Leon.
Okay, I do have here is a new citation of zoning violation for the work down below. This can go out tomorrow morning.
Well, I would send that out tomorrow.
After I issue this, then the, I can issue this.
And then the fines? We'll start when?
Actually, okay, so they have to respond within essentially 10 days, we're getting 13 days. You've got three days for mailing, 10 to respond. They're going to either respond to this or not, they probably will respond to it in just a hearing. We can have a hearing within a week or so of actually getting this back into the schedule with the hearing officer. We present the case, as you all know, they present their case, and the hearing officer determines if I issued it correctly. If I've issued this correctly, which I'm pretty confident that I have, then they can appeal it by going to the Superior Court.